It's one more minute. He is logging in right now, just got the text. There he is. All right. Ryan, are we ready to go?
We are ready to go. I'll begin recording.
Super. Thank you. All right, I will gather this meeting to order. Welcome everyone to the Boulder City Council Meeting of May 18th. We'll start with a couple of quick announcements tonight. First, as usual, if you would like to be notified if you have been exposed to somebody with COVID, sign up at www.adyourphone.com. If you would like information about getting a COVID vaccine, you can do so at the website that's up, boco.org, boco.org/covidvaccinenotify, sign up. And finally, we are still looking for applicants to join us on our city boards and commissions. We have three of them left open: Boulder Junction Access District Parking, Boulder Junction Access District Travel Demand Management, and the Beverage Licensing Authority. We would love to have you join us for one of those boards. You can apply at bouldercolorado.gov/boardsandcommissions. And with that, Alicia, could you please call the roll?
Yes, sir, and good evening, everyone. Councilmember Brockett?
Present.
Friend?
Here.
Joseph?
Present.
Nagel?
Here.
Swetlick?
Here.
Wallach?
Present.
Weaver?
Here.
Yates?
Here.
And Young?
Present.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. And before we get going on our next item, that item will have language interpretation for us. And so, Ryan, I'm going to turn to you and see if you'd like to do any explanation of interpretation for us, and then Erin, I see your hand after that. Ryan?
That's good. Thank you so much. As the mayor mentioned, we'll have interpretation for this evening's COVID update, and want to make sure to share some quick reminders. You can select interpretation in to participate in the meeting in English or in Spanish using the interpretation globe icon in your menu. And a reminder to all speakers to clearly pronounce each word and to take a breath between sentences, and to please not overlap speakers for ease of interpretation. And sticking to one language is most helpful for interpretation. And so that has begun, and please choose your language using the globe icon below. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Erin?
I just got a report from a community member that their link to speak is not working. So I don't know, Alicia, how we can look into-
Is it for the public hearing or the open comment?
They did not specify.
All right, I will go ahead and resend the link to everyone. I think it might be the public hearing because that's the last one we sent. So I'll go ahead and take care of it while you guys are taking care of business.
Thanks so much.
No worries.
Thanks, Erin. Thanks, Alicia. And with that, Nury, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Today, we have a quick update on our COVID. I think we've got some friends and partners from the county to provide that update.
Let's see, if you're ready, I think we're good to go.
I am, and can you all see my screen now?
Yep, all good.
So, thank you very much. My name's Lexi Nolan. I am the Deputy Director of Boulder County Public Health, and I want to say thank you to City Council for having us this evening. I'm here with Trina Ruland, our attorney, and Chris Urbina, our Chief Medical Officer, to provide some data updates, as well as some updates on our public health orders and to answer any questions folks have. I will say before we get started that we do have great news. We did pass the 70% of eligible Boulder County residents vaccinated last week, so we're very excited about that. Of course, no sooner did we pass that marker, that milestone, than we had another group eligible to receive the vaccine, which is also wonderful news. So now our 12- to 15-year-olds can get vaccinated. And from what we're hearing, that's happening at a rapid pace. So that's wonderful to hear. And that was speaking too fast. I'll slow down. So just to review some of the numbers, we are at 71.2% of 16-year-olds and up, and 66.4% of 10-year-olds and up have received at least one vaccine. If we look at a breakdown by ethnicity and race, this is a little bit of a busy slide, but this is a new kind of slide that we're using. And what we like about it is that it not only provides information about how many folks have been vaccinated in each specific group, it also shows the number of people that remain unvaccinated within that group. And this is really helping us to think about how we target our messages, how we think about where we're really doing specific outreach to groups, to make sure that we are continuing to support everyone to be able to get a vaccine who wants one. This is our geographic map, and as you can see, it continues to get darker, which is wonderful news. We now have an area of Boulder County where over 75% have been vaccinated. I will point out, as I usually do, that most of the areas that are under 50% vaccination rates, we have no areas that are under 25%. But the areas that are between 25% and 50% of the folks that are vaccinated tend to be less dense areas, so there aren't that many people there. They are still important, and we are still working to reach them. But just so you have a sense of proportion. This is a breakout of our different age groups, and I think folks will remember that recently we've been very concerned about the high numbers of cases, particularly among young folks. So our 10- to 22-year-olds and even up to about 35-year-olds have been high up in the rates lately. And what we're seeing is this dramatic decrease in cases. And there's a significant amount of this is due to the vaccination uptake, including in younger folks, which we're starting to make more progress with. In terms of geographic distribution of cases, you can see that those case numbers, those number of individuals are falling, that it's proportional across cities, although we are still seeing more cases in Longmont than in Boulder. And this is just a really nice slide that illustrates the relationship between the vaccine uptake and the changes in cases that we've seen. So as we follow this orange line, and we see the number of folks vaccinated, the percent of folks vaccinated, we see this decline in cases. And of course, what, you know, the quick reaction is to say, well, wait a second, you have a period here between March, or during March, when cases and vaccinations were increasing. And that's true, and that's because the vaccine takes a little while to work, right? You have to give it a chance to impact your body. And then, so if we count out four weeks from the beginning of releasing that uptick in vaccinations, then we also start to see that decline in cases. That's just an indicator of the value of the vaccines on our case rates. If we look at hospital admission rates for Boulder County and the Denver metro region in Adams County, this is the pattern that we see going back to early March. And I'm showing you these three to show you the extremes of the two counties in the Denver metro region. This orange line is Boulder. The pink line is the average of all the metro counties, and the blue line is Adams County, just as an example, because it's had some higher hospitalization rates. And this particular metric is important because this blue level right here that goes across here, this is the level that would create an automatic snapback from our current position in the level clear on the dial, which allows us to gather without restrictions. If we breach this blue line, then we will automatically go back to more restrictions. You can see we're not really in danger of that right now, which is great news. And our seven-day positivity is precipitously declining recently. So we were hovering between 4% and 5% for a good five or six weeks, which was making us a little bit nervous. And now what we're seeing is that impact of the vaccinations. There is a decline in testing, but the decline is not significant enough to make us worried that this positivity rate isn't accurate for the people, for the groups that are being tested. We do want to encourage people to keep getting tested, especially if you haven't been vaccinated, and especially among kids, which is still where we're seeing the higher transmission rates. And you can see how the change in deaths has, how the vaccines have impacted the change in deaths. And I just want to point out that we have not heard of a case in Colorado to this point where someone who has had a vaccination has died of COVID. All of the folks that are hospitalized with severe illness or that have passed away were not vaccinated. And this is just really emphasizing that protective nature of the vaccine. You know, it protects you from coming down with the illness. It protects your family from having an exposure, and it protects your family's ability to continue to go out and socialize and meet with your friends and go to work. So just really hoping people keep on it a little bit. As I was saying, testing has dropped a little bit, not significantly. And so these are just a few of the data resources if you're interested in learning more. I do want to take a minute to just really thank the City of Boulder for all of the partnership that we've had in achieving this milestone. We work with you guys in so many different ways, and just deeply appreciate everything that you've done to jump in, lend resources, lend ideas, work with us, be patient with us, as we really, you know, explore some of these ways of doing things together and tackling hard problems. So just thank you so much to all of you for the partnership, and we look forward to continuing to move to address the virus and to move into recovery. We do want to discuss a little bit tonight what's happening in relation to our public health order. So I'd like to stop sharing my screen and turn it over to Tina Ruland from the County Attorney's Office.
Hi, I'm Trina. I am the attorney for Boulder County Public Health. I'm just going to briefly review the current orders in place regarding COVID-19 and give you a little preview of where we think we are heading with those orders. As Lexi mentioned, Boulder County is now in level clear, which means that all businesses may operate without those COVID restrictions, those capacity restrictions that we were so used to. However, the state does have a very minimal COVID-19 restriction orders still in place. It does apply to indoor public spaces with more than 100 people gathered in a single room. That will remain in effect until June 1st. The state order also still requires schools and early childhood education centers to follow case and outbreak guidance, which means that schools are still subject to quarantine and isolation requirements. Hospitals are still reporting COVID cases, mentioning what Lexi was pointing to earlier to make sure that our healthcare system is not at any risk of being breached. The second component of this is the face covering order. The state, in response to the CDC's updated guidance that came out last Wednesday, updated its statewide face covering order. And just to clarify what happened, the CDC issued new guidance for vaccinated people, saying that if you are vaccinated, you can essentially go back to pre-pandemic life in most situations. This guidance was not intended for healthcare settings, nor was it intended to supersede local or state orders. And so state orders are still in effect. I just want to make that very clear, even in light of the CDC guidance. So in response to that CDC guidance, the state changed its face covering order and said, if you are vaccinated, we no longer recommend that you have to wear a mask. However, if you are unvaccinated, we recommend you wear a mask. And a mask is required if you're unvaccinated in a school setting, jail setting, congregate care facility, and healthcare settings. Boulder County's public health local mask order is still in effect. We have been spending the past couple of days getting stakeholder input, talking to our partners, and making sure that we fully understand the CDC guidance and how it interacts with us as a county and a local jurisdiction. What we expect to do is to update our local public health order to largely align with the state as we put out in the press release last Friday, meaning that if you are not yet vaccinated, we strongly recommend that you wear a mask. If you are not yet vaccinated, you will still be required to wear a mask in a healthcare setting, school, or jail. And in fact, in the school setting and in the congregate care facility setting and in the healthcare settings, masks will still be required regardless of vaccination status, because in the school setting, most people are not vaccinated. And in the healthcare and long-term care facility settings, those are just very high-risk settings with high-risk folks in them. The state's order, the state's face covering order, is in effect until June 1st, and our local order will align to match that timeline for the most part. Happy to answer any questions about that.
Great. Well, thank you both, Lexi and Trina. We always love hearing from you, and these updates are getting better and better, so we'll just keep having your back. So that's great. I turn to council and see if council has any questions, any clarifying questions. Mary?
Yes, I thank you, Lexi, and to Boulder County Public Health. And I just wanted to compliment you on how far we've come with the data disaggregation compared to the beginning of the pandemic. So I really appreciate that, and thank you very much for the update.
Great. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll repeat, Lexi, your thanks always. Thank you back for all the work that Boulder County Public Health has done with us. It's been a long road, and we had to ramp up pretty quickly, and we leaned on you quite a bit. So thanks for your partnership and your cooperation in getting us to where we are. Last call, council members, any further questions? All right, with that, thanks. Yeah, Mark?
Yeah, I did. But I also want to point out that my raise hand function is not working. I'm not quite sure what to do about that at the moment. Somebody can give me some guidance that would help. But I do have a question, which is, it seems that businesses are setting their own standards for the conduct of business within their premises. Is that the case that they're all free to do so? Require masks, not require masks, however they see fit?
So until we update the order, masks are still required in all public indoor spaces. We expect the order to be updated tomorrow. Once that happens, businesses in general do have the ability to still require masks. And if you are a higher-risk business, you know, younger clientele, we would recommend that you do require masks in that situation. The same guidance from the state still applies. There's actually some very helpful civil rights guidance for businesses. If they require masks, can they ask you to put one on? Yes, that kind of stuff. That all still exists there. Businesses can also inquire about vaccine status in most situations.
Okay, thank you. And Sam, I found an alternate raise hand function, which I'll try to use.
Okay, great.
If I could just add on to Trina's comment, we will be looking over the next few days about how to help businesses think about whether a mask policy or an inquiry policy is appropriate for their staff or for their customers. And we'll be working on some communications to help and support them.
Super. And I guess I see Chris Urbina here. Chris, I'll turn to you briefly and see, do you have anything that you want to share with us for we've got you here?
Oh, thanks, Mayor, members of the council. I'm just here as a pretty face and to hear answer questions, so.
All right. Well, thanks for being here with your pretty face. We appreciate it. With that, seeing no more questions, thank you again, Boulder County Public Health, and I will bring it back to council, and I believe we are ready for open comment. So with that, our first people signed up for open comment tonight are Donna George, Patrick Murphy, and Jane Wilson. Oh, and before I call on Donna, I will let folks know that our interpretation services will be ending now that the COVID briefing is over. So the rest of the meeting will not be interpreted. And with that, Donna, we are ready for your-
Por eso, Donna estamos listos. Buenas noches.
Be able to unmute yourself now. Donna, I see you using the Zoom app and the phone. If you're on the phone, you can do-
Okay, I just unmuted on the app. So which one do you want me to talk on?
We can hear you, Donna. You are good to go.
Okay, so I'm going to shut off the phone. Okay, you can still hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Hi, my name is Donna George. I live at 4661 Tallyhoe Court. And I'm talking tonight about the Gun Barrel Community Center Plan, IGA, which I believe is expiring this month. And it needs to be renewed because there's still a lot of work to be done for the Gun Barrel Community Center Plan. The plan protects the area from a lot of high buildings being built there. And I know a lot of people in Gun Barrel don't want to just have a whole bunch of high buildings blocking their views in the Gun Barrel Center area. In relation to that also is the Gun Barrel Subcommunity Plan, which we really need a Gun Barrel Subcommunity Plan. And I think that needs to be done before any more development in the Gun Barrel area is approved. Because people in Gun Barrel, Gun Barrel is a very unique area. It has, you know, the city annexed a lot of areas, especially mainly the retail and the commercial centers. But many of the housing is in an area that many people want to remain as rural suburban. And yet, it seems to be that the city and others may want to just turn this into an urban area, to put in as much housing as possible to serve the employment centers of the city of Boulder. And that's disingenuous to the people who live in the Gun Barrel area. This is where they live. They should have a strong voice in what happens in their community and how their community changes and develops in the future. It does not mean that they're against any changes. It does not mean that they wouldn't even welcome some density. But they do not want to be turned into a major dense area just for, just to provide housing for the city of Boulder, because the city of Boulder is bringing in so many jobs. And with the tech industry, it is happening more and more. I will be talking on the library district tonight, but this is just an aside because I was reading over the library district.
Donna, Donna, thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Next, we have Patrick Murphy, Jane Wilson, and Ray Bamba. Patrick?
My name is Patrick Murphy. I live in Boulder. This is a reality check on the transparency failure of public access to emails sent to city council. I'm asking if this failure is due to incompetence, intention, or what? Slide two. If you figure out the three-step process to get to the emails, you're confronted with this. A webpage only a data manager could love. This lists data fields that are available, as if most folks know what this even means. I do know what it means. And after playing around with it for about 15 minutes, I got nowhere. Slide three. So I clicked the data tab. I got to see something that represented emails, but they weren't readable since the columns are locked. Not good. I wanted to find emails I sent that included web links and graphics to see what they looked like. I tried scrolling down 10 lines at a time through the 32,000 lines, which was nuts. It took about half an hour to figure out the filter icon versus sorting. But I then found I still had to export the data to Excel to actually work with it. What I discovered was a huge flaw in the data and a total degradation of transparency compared to what it was in the past. Slide four. The first thing I noticed is that all the emails I sent over the last six months are missing, as well as additional large gaps. Slide five. The city's website states that all emails are posted and nothing is redacted. Both of these statements are false. Slide six. Not only are images and links redacted, but dozens of emails are missing. Slide seven. This is what my emails actually look like, not a string of text. This needs to be resolved. Slide eight. Next time, back to critical review of Boulder's need for fast carbon reduction instead of just blowing smoke. And Nurya, it's wonderful to have you here. Look forward to meeting you someday in the future. Thanks.
Thank you, Patrick. Next, we have Jane Wilson, Ray Bamba, and Evan Rabbits. Jane?
Hi, my name is Jane Sykes Wilson. I live on Maxwell Avenue in Boulder. I am commenting about the library funding issue this evening. I wanted to thank you very much for discussing the library funding issue this evening. As many of us know, it's been a long time coming, and we have waited and watched one of our most loved and used institutes fade as the funding for the library, as always, is first to be cut and last to never to be restored. I've been involved with the Boulder Public Library for the past seven years, as a library foundation board member, an employee, a donor, a library commission member, and now the chair of the library commission, and of course, as always, as a patron. I've seen firsthand how important the library is to this community, and I've studied in depth the funding battle that the library currently faces and always has faced. I'm urging you to create a library district by resolution along with the county commissioners. This will allow the two groups to appoint a library district board and to work through the legal, administrative, and logical details of an intergovernment agreement. This will allow the Boulder community to have their voices heard when it's time for them to vote. The library is unlike any space in Boulder. It serves everyone, from the computers that allow for job searches, to the support offered to someone starting a new business, to the five-year-olds learning to read, and the new Americans who are learning to read English, to the most vulnerable of our society who rely on the homebound services. Doing nothing to address the lack of funding leaves our community without this vital resource. Among other things, it will create a lost generation of readers who are unable to check out the books that excite them and to nourish their curious minds. The ultimate community engagement on this topic is to let the community vote on whether they would like a library district or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. And I will mention, this is open comment. Any further commentary on the library subject should be under the public hearing for the library district, which will come later tonight. With that, we have Ray Bamba, Evan Rabbits, and Lisa Nelson. Ray?
Hi, my name is Ray Bamba, and I live on 13th Street. I'm urging the council to take the 891 12th Street property off today's consent agenda, because the most important conditions for approval are currently not under consideration and were inadequately addressed in the last meeting. 24-hour onsite management is critical to protect the neighbors from undue burden. Nighttime is the most important time to have an accountable person onsite. The only argument against this requirement came from the developer who claimed that in their experience, it would be ineffective. This is ludicrous. Around the world, 24-hour onsite managers are able to enforce rules. And if this landlord is not able to control their own representatives, it is a statement of- And if this landlord is not able to control their own representatives, it is a statement of their own incompetence. An alternative explanation for the developer's resistance to onsite management, as was presented at the last meeting, is the fact that they market their properties on Facebook as party houses, and it goes against their business model. Another obvious explanation is the additional cost. But please do the math. This property will undoubtedly generate three-quarters of a million dollars per year in revenue or more. It is absurd to suggest that the neighbors should bear the cost of enforcement rather than the landlord. Consider the cost to the neighbors of having to get out of bed, call the management property, and the police, and complain in the middle of the night. These neighbors are adults with jobs and responsibilities. It is entirely unacceptable for the city to place this burden for nighttime enforcement on the neighbors. All the evidence before the city suggests this will be a problem. The precedent for twenty-four-hour oversight is already in place in the neighboring sorority. The only reason the Pi Phi house is a good neighbor by their own admission is because they have a live-in professional house director. I urge you to take the opportunity to investigate the situation more carefully and strengthen requirements for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Next, we have Evan Rabbits, Lisa Nelson, and Rachel Daly. Evan?
As Lily Tomlin said, no matter how cynical I get, I can't keep up. Now we learned from the Rocky Mountain Peace and Justice Center that their open records request shows city council ignored all one hundred nineteen citizen emails asking for an open hearing about the Rocky Mountain Greenway, which should be called the Plutonium Pathway. Instead, city and county officials colluded to deny the hearing and endorse the Plutonium Pathway. So you're being sued. What a contrast with my open records request showing that in the first two hundred and forty days of twenty seventeen, the director of the Boulder Downtown Partnership wrote two hundred and eleven emails to council and got a reply to every single one. We pay you to represent the people, not Boulder's oligarchs and plutocrats. To quote Craig Monday, Sunday, senior advisor to the CEO of Microsoft, member of Obama's Council of Advisors on Science and Tech at Boulder's famous Gold Symposium last week, quote, "Government is pathetic," unquote. Here's how it works here. Rich and powerful Governor Polis is a pathetic toady to oil and gas, which we saw when he killed off the anti-fracking ballot initiatives he sponsored in twenty fourteen. Then certain members of city council are sub-toadies to Jared, and city staff are sub-sub-toadies. That's why the city butchered our first-in-the-nation online petitioning, which would make anti-fracking initiatives easier. Guess what? You spent years to learn all this poison toading and keeping your oath of silence and hiding behind government immunity, and now everyone is growing to hate you.
Thank you, Evan. Next, we have Lisa Nelson, Richard Daly, and Lynn Segal. Lisa?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Great, thank you. Hi, I'm Lisa Nelson, and I live at Tenth and College. And I'm speaking tonight respectfully request that you take Marpa House off of tonight's consent agenda to allow time for further consideration. There's been substantial community input submitted over the past two years, providing information that would support denial of this application. Unfortunately, that information does not appear to be reflected in the analysis and recommendations being made. For example, it is difficult to understand how approval of this project can be given based on a comparison to fraternity use of the property from a half a century ago without equal consideration of documented information from the most recent four decades of use. My mother remembers going to parties of the property when it was the SAE house sixty-five years ago. However, I'm fairly certain that at no time in the forty-plus years that the property was a contemplative community did any neighbor ever have to go over to Marpa House in the middle of the night to ask them to meditate more quietly, nor were neighbors subjected to the frequent presence of obscene graffiti, trash, and beer cups strewn everywhere, which are common sites at the applicant's other properties. In light of the strong and well-documented concerns about this project, if you do decide to approve this proposal with conditions, please consider this. Staff and applicant draw a comparison to the non-conforming use of the Pi Beta Phi sorority house next door to justify approval of this project. If that is in fact the case, then the operating characteristics of this project should reflect the same operating characteristics that Pi Phi has, which include no alcohol, no drugs, no parties, and most relevant to this discussion, a full-time live-in professional house manager who ensures that the rules are followed day and night. To be consistent, the Marpa House development at a minimum must include a live-in onsite professional manager. A student tenant acting as a manager or an off-site company representative designated to take neighbor complaints is not the same thing, does not serve the same purpose, and will not address the concerns of neighbors. There's also a question of what will happen if approval is granted and conditions are not met. It's not clear if there will be any meaningful consequences if applicant does not meet the conditions you set. Speaking for many of my neighbors, we would love to see the next chapter of the Marpa House property be something that continues the legacy of peace and community that existed there for over forty years. Thank you for your time and service.
Thank you, Lisa. Next, we have Rachel Daly, Lynn Segal, and Claire Kelly. Rachel?
Hi, my name is Rachel Daly, and I am actually here tonight to talk about the library, but I'll wait to talk about that for a moment. I just want to comment about our issues with housing. I know that there's a lot of controversy around density, but I think that I would just urge you guys to please consider what it means for the people who've lived in Colorado, who want to live in Colorado, who can't afford to be here, who can't find a home. We're experiencing a really incredible housing shortage right now. So please, whatever issues you're looking at, please consider that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rachel. Next, we have Lynn Segal, Claire Kelly, and Gwen Barack. Lynn?
Yeah. First, Marpa House, do not rule on that. Do not follow the consent agenda. It's clearly non-conforming, increasing non-conformity. You know, my brother Paul lived there for ten years. At the end, it was nine hundred dollars a month, including food. And now my brother is basically homeless, Tom and Bob, basically homeless. And guess what, Bob? My brother does landscaping. He doesn't have to go to school to go do landscaping. He mows lawns, but he can't afford to live here anymore. So just saying, if you're gonna send people to culinary arts school or landscaping to get them out of the unhoused condition they're in, you better go further than that. You better train them on a Google job to live in Boulder. Let's see. I can't believe everyone I heard tonight. So right on. Gun barrel, right on. Ray Bambia and Lisa Nelson, listen to your constituents. This Marpa House situation is the model of housing in Boulder, and you have just turned it into a Frankenstein. It's just so unbelievably unacceptable. Rocky Flats? Rocky Flats, you got one lawsuit. With Rocky Flats, do you want another? And you've got another one coming, hopefully, from Holland and Hart on Marpa House. This is just obscene. These things are even listened to. Eleven Marine, there was debate for three hours over a dining room being used as a bedroom. Now luckily, staff didn't approve of that, but that developer will be back after bedrooms are for people, probably trying to get five people into the place or four people.
Thank you, Lynn. Next, we have Claire Kelly, Gwen Barack, and Valerie Kindgren. Claire?
I'm here to talk about the library. Should I wait?
You should, and I'll just ask to make sure, Alicia, can you make sure that Claire is signed up for the library, please? Thank you, Claire. Next, we have Gwen Barack, Valerie Kindgren, and Michelle Morrissey. Gwen?
Hi, I'm Gwen Barack, and I have a presentation that I think is coming up right now. I live at Norwood Avenue, and I'm the deputy director of the Boulder Museum of Contemporary Art. And first, I just want to thank the city staff and city council members for all that you do to support the arts and cultural institutions in the city, including BMOCA. Tonight, I'm here to invite you to visit the current exhibition that is open at BMOCA's flagship facility at seventeen fifty thirteen Street on the east side of the civic area. Thank you for going to the next slide. The exhibition is entitled From This Day Forward, and it closes on May thirty-first and features the work of eight artists from around the metro area. Next slide, please. The exhibition is guest curated by Tia Elisa Anthony, and she offers an invitation for us to consider the exhibiting artists' responses to our current reality. Tia Anthony's curation and the exhibiting artist's work respond to the reality that the global pandemic and race, gender, and civil equity conflicts of the past year bring to light the urgent need for change in how we respect humanity. Next slide, please. BMOCA is excited to hold space for contemplation and encourages visitors to move through the galleries while thinking critically about where we see ourselves going from this day forward. Next slide, please. This slide features the curator, Tia Elisa Anthony, in the bottom left, and a number of artists that are exhibiting work as part of the exhibit from this day forward. As the city's contemporary art museum, BMOCA is committed to amplifying the voices of artists and the dialogue about social issues and challenges of our time. And we feel that this exhibition offers this to the Boulder community. Next slide, please. We hope that you'll have an opportunity to come visit the exhibition before it closes on May thirty-first. And thank you so much for your time and all that you do for the arts and cultural institutions here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Gwen. Next, we have Valerie Kindgren, Michelle Morrissey, and Hope Mickelson. Valerie?
Good evening. This is Valerie Kindgren, twelve twelve Cascade. Regarding the Marpa House, you know, we used to love it when the students got back in town, the traffic was bad, and they would hoot and holler for weeks and then be gone until graduation. And now it's different. Many are destructive, they're loud, they're inconsiderate, and sometimes mean. And this is year-round, sometimes three, four times a week. So now we dread the students coming back. We already have a battle going on with this, so I asked myself, why has our city council chosen to allow forty-eight more students in a single-family neighborhood? Why would they do that? And your answer was, students deserve housing too. Forty-eight out of about, what, thirty-three thousand students is not worth ruining our neighborhood. This makes a huge difference to our lives if you allow this. So we're dismayed that our community has not been heard and that you can't understand or won't, that you are making a decision that will impact us in a detrimental way for many, many years. We are willing to work with the developer to come up with a new plan that works for all. And yes, we know that's daunting, and it's gonna cost money, but it's worth it to get it right. We need to get it right now to preserve this neighborhood for generations to come. So I ask you to please deny the application. But if not, then at least take the next two weeks to work on the conditions to strengthen and make those enforceable. That's parking, live-in manager, reporting for more than three years, and consequences. As it is, it will be too difficult for us to monitor. And also, there seems to be this rumor that we're a bunch of privileged folks that don't want this in our backyard. And this is really far from the truth. Many of us bought our homes twenty-three, forty years ago and put in the work to make this a great neighborhood. We have jobs, drive old cars, and some of us struggle to pay bills. So there are all kinds of people here. I ask you again to please reconsider your vote and deny the application. Thanks so much for your time tonight.
Thank you, Val. Next, we have Michelle Morrissey, Hope Mickelson, and Sharon Procopio. Michelle?
Michelle is calling in by phone. Michelle, you'll just want to press star six to unmute yourself. Michelle?
I beg your pardon, city council members. I was still looking forward to seeing your faces. It's been so long. My name is Michelle Denaim, Sierra Garcia Morrissey, and I was hoping to see you all tonight, but here I am. So I just wanted to sort of speak up on some things that have been coming up for me personally based on my love of Boulder and my dedication to this community. As you all know, I was very disappointed to see a million and a half dollars to additional positions in the police department when there are positions yet to be filled. And that that money could have gone a long ways in getting these people back on their feet. That does tie in a little bit to the library for me, because the library has gotten me back on my feet more than once. And I just wanted you all to really consider who you're representing and who you're showing up for, because I know, I think I know you all, at least relatively, and I hope that you can take a step back and really assess if we're working for the people or if we're working for the institutions that sort of suppress the people or oppress the people, depending on who you ask. And I wanted to just remind you of the work that is being done, has been done by the task force and is being done by the oversight panel, and that that budget delegation was not in line with the values that created the task force or I wouldn't speak for the current oversight panel, but I can't assume that any of them would be proud to say that Boulder just allocated over a million dollars to more policing when we have a relatively peaceful community, and I was very disappointed to hear that. And I hope that you would consider allocating those funds towards something like the library or towards something like housing, or I heard some people speaking against increased dwelling, but the reality is if we don't address some of these housing issues, then that's the only alternative. Like, we have to, you have to rent a room at this point. You can't, you know, if you're a young adult trying to start your life, you can't go rent a house in Boulder. You know, you have to be, I mean, we're approaching San Francisco prices, and it's just really disappointing to see.
Thank you, Michelle. I'm sorry to interrupt. Your time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Hope Mickelson, Sharon Procopio, and Alicia Murray. Hope?
Hi, my name is Hope Mickelson, and I live at eight oh five thirteenth street on the hill. I'd like to request that you remove the reconfiguration of the Marpa House, eight ninety-one twelfth street, from the consent agenda and further consider conditions to limit the negative impact the project will have on our neighborhood. Previous discussions by the city council and planning board has priorities and need to protect the applicant's investment and limit restrictions on his development. Some of the commenters, the development solicited for the last meeting, tried to portray the hill neighbors as unsympathetic and overprivileged. On the contrary, I find my neighbors to be caring, honest, hardworking people. My husband and I have met residents, teachers, artists, writers, single moms, CU staff and faculty, and many retired educators. We are as hardworking and as deserving of consideration as the students and the developer whom this plan favors. As much as we love our neighborhood, we have found it challenging to live on the hill, even without dense student apartment complex in the middle of the neighborhood. There are many streets we cannot walk with our dogs because of all the broken glass. Last week while we were walking, a student turned into a driveway and urinated on the fence. Over the past year, the frequent fireworks have been nearly unbearable. When one of our neighbors posted on next door about her struggles with mental illness because she couldn't sleep because of fireworks all night, several students told her that, quote, "Students rule the hill," and that she should leave the neighborhood if she doesn't like it. We set up a soundproofed room in our basement to help us make it through the nights last summer, and the students who were the source of that noise were several blocks away. I have never lived in a town where I need to call the police on my neighbors to be able to sleep, but this is exactly what the plan you're putting in place will require. There will be no repercussions for the developer when this development turns out, just like all their other properties. Please do not approve the reconfiguration of the Marpa House without finding better enforceable ways to minimize its impact on our neighborhood. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Hope. Next, we have Sharon Procopio, Alicia Murray, and Lisa Spalding. Sharon?
Mayor, I do believe that Sharon and Alicia have signed up to speak to the library.
Great. Thank you, Ryan, then Lisa Spalding. Yep.
Hi, Ryan, do you have the presentation? Oops, thank you.
And, and can you, oh, okay, you can turn that on in a minute. I, I join the neighbors who preceded me in asking you to remove Marpa House from tonight's consent agenda. The conditions staff has drawn up are not adequate to protect the neighborhood from the impacts of the applicant's proposal to expand this non-conforming use. Around midnight last Friday, Daniel Harburger shot the video that follows of Cedar House, the applicant's rental property at 14th and Euclid. The occupancy is 28, 20 people less than he proposes for Marpa House. This was just a typical Friday night, no special occasion. And Ryan, if you could turn that on, it would be great. Thank you. The last shot in the video shows the quiet neighborhood around Marpa House as it is today. If you could show the, the photo now, Ryan, it would be great. Without a professional adult manager residing at the property full-time, calm nights will turn chaotic and daylight will reveal trash and other remnants of the night before. As written, Condition D does not guarantee the management will take full responsibility for protecting the neighbors from impacts either at night or during the day. That is Cedar House on the left and that is Marpa House on the right as it is today. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Lisa. And with that, we will bring public comment to a close. Bring it back to staff and see Nuria or Tom, if you have any response to anything you heard tonight. No?
Hope to share to staff if they have anything they want to add.
Don't see anything. Tom, anything from you?
I have nothing, Sam. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, Aaron, and then Rachel.
I had a question. Ms. George referenced an IGA that's expiring, and I don't think that's on my radar anyway. Other council members may be aware of that. Is it possible to get an update? Don't expect people necessarily know offhand, but on the status of that, that IGA regarding Gun Barrel?
Chris?
Yeah, Aaron, thanks for asking that question, and Jacob could jump in here as well. There is an IGA related to the Gun Barrel Community Center Plan, and I think Jacob's got a little more info on it.
That's correct, and, and thank you, Chris. I am by no means an expert in the topic, however, the information that I have at hand is that that IGA with the county related to Gun Barrel was signed in 2006 and it has a term of 20 years. So it will expire in 2026, and it just applies to the retail core of Gun Barrel, and it's only for any development that's over three and a quarter stories tall, and it allows for county review in those conditions. So it's relatively limited, and there's another five years left before its expiration.
Great. Thanks for that. Yeah, I was a little bit familiar with the IGA itself. I just hadn't heard of it expiring, but it sounds like we got five years left, so there's some time to renew that. Hopefully that'll come up on the work plan in three or four years.
Thank you, Chris and Jacob. Thank you, Aaron. Rachel?
I just wanted to say thank you to, I think it was Gwyneth from Bimoka. That was a delightful presentation and hope that, that she will do it again. Keep us posted. Thanks.
Very good. And with that, Alicia, I'll turn it back to you.
All right, sir. Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda. Item number three on our agenda. Items are A through O.
Very good. Thank you, Alicia. And we have a few items on the consent agenda to discuss tonight. The first one is item F. That is a first reading of an adjustment to base, which is a pretty routine budgetary thing we do, but there's a subject that we want further discussion about. For that, I'll turn to Councilmember Brockett. Aaron?
Yeah, thanks, Sam. I appreciate you teaming this up for me to address. So as, as council members know, and as community members may or may not know, the, the second reading of the adjustment to base is scheduled for a couple of weeks from now, and it was scheduled to be on the consent agenda, and I had sent an email to the Council Agenda Committee requesting that we move that to a public hearing. And my justification for that was that we've been putting things on the consent agenda that either have already had a public hearing or that have minimal community interest in them, for them, which I think has been working really well. But there are some new proposals in the adjustment to base that are of significant community interest that I felt merited outreach to the public on. And so I put that out there with that request, and since then have been thinking about the matter and had some discussions with some other folks and kind of honed in on my thinking regarding that. So specifically, the, the, the adjustment to base, it has a lot of routine changes and some, some great changes, and then some, some things that we already talked about at a study session regarding how to work with encampments in our community and other ways of kind of improving the public experience and public spaces and, and how to improve that experience. So, and as I thought it through, that most of those things have garnered wide community support. So for example, the downtown ambassador program proposal, everybody seems to think is a good idea. Similarly, the, the park ranger issue, or the new urban park rangers or restoration, those people generally think those are a good idea. The one area that has been controversial, I think, is the additional funding for six additional police officers to be added to the, the police force. And there have been some strong opinions from the community on, in a lot of different sides, different perspectives on that matter. And so that's the item that really had the, the strong community interest. And so that, that was my, effectively, my primary reason for requesting that be a public hearing. So here's what I'd like to, to bring forward to counsel, because I've, I've heard from some of my colleagues that maybe public hearing isn't necessary or desirable. We did, when we worked on this issue at the study session, we heard from the police department that they have a significant deficit in the number of officers on their force right now. They're allowed to have, they have an approved amount of 184 sworn officers, and I think that depending on how you count who's in the pipeline or who they still need to hire, they're, they're down more than 20 on that number and have some significant hiring left to do, which will take some time. And I reached out to Chief Harold today. She says that she's working hard, her department is working hard on getting new officers hired and onboarded. That process will take some time. She thought that she might be able to hire up to that 190 level, but that it's going to take a lot of work to, to do the hiring, and it will take some time, regardless of whether it's a 184, 190 level. So here, here's my proposal, that I don't believe that it is necessary at this time to add the additional police funding in this adjustment to base because of the additional hiring that needs to happen already for the police department. So my proposal would be to not include that additional police funding in this adjustment to base. Instead, recapture those funds for additional restoration of services in, in some of the areas. You know, it's not a huge amount of money in the next few months, but some amount of money to maybe restore some Parks and Rec services or help the planning department get back up to speed or human services funding, et cetera. And so what I'd like to hear from counsel about is, would people be amenable to removing that from this adjustment to base and saying that if the police department is able to hire up to the 184 level and is able, and wants to come back for a request for funding up to the 190 level, you know, while being able to state how things are working and how that would be very helpful, that they could come back in a future adjustment to base or other budget cycle with that request. So, so my proposal today is to remove that from the adjustment to base today, if possible, and, and then move forward with the rest of the adjustment to base on the regular schedule, and then let the police department come back with an additional request if they can, that it is necessary at a future time. So thanks for bearing with me through that explanation, and I'd like to hear from my colleagues.
Super. Thanks, Aaron. Yeah, we'll just go with colleagues. I'd like to turn to staff at some point, but let's start with council questions or comments. Bob?
Well, my, my question, thank you, Aaron, for that proposal. I think it's an intriguing proposal and worth considering. My question really is for staff. Sam, if that's okay?
Sure. You bet.
I don't know if Chief Harold is, is on or somebody from the police department?
Oops. Yes.
Oh, hi, chief. How are you? So chief, considering Aaron's proposal, would you, if, if we were to pass, as Aaron suggested, right now, we, we would do all the things we talked in April 27, except for making the budget adjustment now, would you still be able to redeploy the six police officers that you've talked about? I think, I think you shared with us that you would redeploy six existing officers to some problem areas that we have, particularly downtown and civic area on the Hill. Would you still be able to do that? Subject to Aaron's suggestion that we could revisit the, the budget question?
No, sir, I would not unless I took resources from other departments like I talked about on April 27. I, I think that the main point is historically, the police were never had the expectation to clean encampments or post or provide safety. The additional ambassador program, the parks, and the cleaning of what we discussed is three to four days a week. I would have to take an entire unit out of the police department to be able to provide that level of service. So I would either have to take my traffic section away, which currently is nine officers, or I would have to take my University Hill Impact Team, which includes the downtown group, the University Hill group, and the San Juan group. And so, you know, it's really priorities. It would come down to priorities, but I could not provide that level of service and protection and safety and posting and cleaning the encampments for that level of service with what we have now. And it would take a massive hiring spree, like we discussed on April 27, to make this happen and to do it the right way, to do it compassionately, and make sure everybody is safe. And then also to support the ambassadors and the new park rangers for the first year or the 18-month pilot project.
Thanks, chief. If I could ask a follow-up question, I want to make sure that I understood the, the original plan, which we talked about in April 27, was I think there was two parts to it, as I understood it. One was you were going to redeploy six officers, existing officers, to these, these problem areas, and then effectively backfill for them by increasing your budgeted headcount from 184 to 190. And I know that you're, you're down significantly from the 184, but you're working real hard to hire up to that point and maybe ultimately to the 190. Were the, were the next six officers that, or some group of the next officers you hire going to backfill for those six? I'm trying to understand if they were going to be the last six or the next six or some middle six, how that was going to work?
So they will, to provide some level of service to support Parks and Rec, the downtown ambassadors, I would need to take six officers that I can train up within the next month. Like we discussed last time, they're going to need legal training, they're going to need, need more ICAT and use of force training, they're going to need more tactical training, they're going to need more legal training. And so I would take six of my veteran officers from different locations within the police department and backfill that with hires that will be having coming out of the academy. So I have people coming out of academies that by midsummer I'll be able to backfill, and then we've been working hard by contacting police academies across the state to provide, to get people in as quickly as possible, and then it is my desire and hope that we are able to hire lateral transfers, which only take, you know, six to eight weeks to get up and running with our field training officer program. And those are officers that already have post certifications in Colorado. So that, that is the plan. And when you think about staffing to do this, right, my target goal is more like 200 because we are constantly losing officers almost on a daily occurrence right now.
Thank you, chief.
Mary?
Yeah, I have a, a quick question for the chief, just to understand the timeline. So I'm understanding how you would take more experienced officers from some sections and redeploy them into helping with the encampments and the ambassadors and the cleanups. And then you would then replace those redeployed, more experienced officers with the recent hires. So there's going to be, it's going to take some time. So how much time do you expect it to take before you would reach the 184?
Well, if I'm, if I'm successful, I hire all, everything that we have open right now in the next hiring phase, which we have going on right now. So I would need the funding right now to offer people positions in academies and offer lateral transfers now. And that's the problematic part of hiring in police departments. You have the openings and you have, you make job offers to as many people as are qualified to do the job. And that would be my desire, is to have that many people hired in the next hiring cycle. And right now, we are diligently trying to get more academy openings to put people in those openings. I can't guarantee you that we're going to get everybody in this first hiring cycle, but we will continue the hiring cycle. It will not close.
So what you're saying is that if you, if we're successful, then you would reach the 184 within about six weeks?
I would hope to reach the 190 as quickly as possible, as, as fast as, and it comes down to doing a really solid recruiting and background check on everybody, but I, I'm dedicating a tremendous amount of resources to get these people up and running as quickly as possible. Because what you have to keep in mind is I'm losing people at the same time I'm trying to bring people in. So again, the important thing is, right now, is to really target for 200. That's, that's what my goal is, knowing that I'm losing people pretty regularly in the police department.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Adam, and then Rachel. Adam?
Yeah, I'm not going to try to relitigate the vote because that happened, but I am still a little confused on the timing, just because I don't know many departments that we try to pre-fill or have a hiring system that goes above what we're actually trying to fill. You know, if we're having a problem of hitting our cap, that's when I think it's appropriate to talk about budget expansion, especially when we have so many services that aren't currently being provided that we normally do. So if that were a problem we were running into where we needed more officers because we had hired as many as were already allotted, I think that makes a lot of sense. But until that point, you know, I, I'm not sure it makes a whole lot of sense to put budget somewhere where it's maybe going to be spent, especially when we have a second adjustment to base in a matter of months, where we could approve that again. And as chief said, the hiring is not going to close until it is full. So it seems like we have multiple bites at this apple, but why would we spend the money or allot the money when it could be allotted elsewhere? Why not wait a little bit, in my mind?
And Adam, do you have a response to that, chief?
The only response I have is if I don't start hiring now, we're talking another, it, it just pushes the hiring process back and back and back. So, you know, it is standard practice in policing is to have a target over your number, knowing that you're losing people. It's just a standard practice to, to ensure that you are always at least keeping your policing levels consistent. And that unfortunately does not, has not happened in Boulder, but this is a standard practice across the country, is trying to target above, knowing that you're losing and knowing that how hard it is right now to recruit and to retain police officers.
Thank you, chief. Rachel?
Um, I'm with Adam. I also don't want to relitigate and, and understand the, the complicated hiring dynamics here. It, it does sound a bit like we're in like quicksand where we are quicksand where we are losing faster than we can hire replacements. So I I do wonder about this kind of pre-hiring and not waiting to see when we get to 184, but we already litigated that at April 27. So understood that I wasn't on the on the kind of winning side of that argument. But overall, I guess, in terms of of Aaron's initial request to have a public hearing, I don't know that during my tenure on council, we've had a public hearing on either homelessness or policing, and those are obviously both areas of intense public interest. So I think, you know, we haven't voted on this yet. My my experience has been that we've we have a vote on something that has significant public interest, we have a public hearing on it. So it it seems like we would need to have a public hearing on this either in in two weeks. If we're going to move forward with it, or maybe when we do the second adjustment to base, if we're waiting, but I I think it's very clear based on open comments and emails that this is an area of intense public interest, and that seems to be when we hold public hearings. So I don't, I don't know why we wouldn't for this. Thanks.
Mark?
Yeah, I'm reluctant to put the chief in the position of having to rob Peter to pay Paul and to strip down already undermanned departments in order to achieve the six officer complement that she envisions for the homelessness issue. So I I would not wait until the second adjustment to base. I would prove this now and give her the resources that I think she requires in order to carry out the policies that that we have approved. And you know, that's just my view. Thank you.
Mary.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand something that Adam said, that he said he's not aware of any other departments that do this. So my question is, is this something that is specific to how police departments operate? Or are there other departments that do this? And what is the characteristic of police departments that they have to hire in this manner versus other departments?
Chief, I think that might be to you first.
That was for Adam. Mary, that's a great question. I don't know if this is a standard practice in other other city departments. I can tell you in policing throughout my almost 30 year career, this has always been problematic. And especially problematic right now with the national policing crisis and the King Supers incident. People are just deciding not to retire from the police department, to resign from the police department. And so we are, we are losing people and there's, you know, retire retirements and resignations. But this for my entire career has always been problematic is to keep your staffing levels up to what your complement is. It is always been hard to keep officers, you know, with proper staffing levels. And unfortunately, what that's indicative of is not providing the community with consistent policing services. And so right now, you know, if I was asked to to do the encampment cleanups with the other departments and provide safety, I would have to take another unit out of service to make that happen on a consistent basis. And I am trying to hire, you know, as quickly, but also due diligence, because these are important positions for the community and to do that right as well. But we will be in a hiring cycle to keep these numbers up.
Very good.
Yeah, and I just was, I was looking to someone on staff to answer the other part of the question.
I I'll defer to Chris if he has additional information, but I know just from experience that other departments like fire departments generally have this issue and they overhire because of their academies. I've been in other cities where traffic management is in a similar case. I believe that Boulder Fire does that as well, but perhaps Chris has more detail.
No, it is correct. And it's, there's a couple of pieces. The first is, especially with fire and police departments where you have the the applicants or the the new staff going through an academy process. There are some that through that academy process will drop out. And so a lot of times, especially like with fire, and then as Mary has described with police, there are multiple academies and you can you can draw from those. There's other times where if we know that there is a planned retirement, say of a staff member, we'll do what we call an overhire, which is essentially hire that person's replacement before that person has officially retired for a short overlap period. And so that's the other thing that will occur sometimes in departments is a, there'll be a short period of an overhire just to ensure smooth transitions.
Thank you. Aaron?
Well, and Chris, just to follow up on that, I mean, that that kind of overhire is something that that departments can just do, right? I mean, you don't need special dispensation or budget in order to have some overlap like that, do you?
Internally, we still go through an approval process just to ensure that the funding is there and and it isn't going to put a department over the over their budget.
Right, but it doesn't, you don't come to city council for approval on that, that kind of thing. It's something that departments can do.
Okay, so I want to remind us that any council person has the ability to cause this to become a public hearing on June 1. So we don't have a vote here and we don't have, you know, approval. So Rachel, to your point, should you want a public hearing, you could cause one to happen. Aaron, I'm gonna go back to you. This is your item. Do you have a suggestion you'd like us to move forward with hearing what you've heard so far?
Yeah, well, Chief Harold, I mean, I thank you for that perspective and I appreciate it. And I hear that you're you're hiring as as fast as you can, which is good. Like, we have a deficit, right, that that needs to be filled. And it seems like you know, some amount of like overhiring, like Chris was talking about, you know, seems like very reasonable kind of thing to do. I just, I still, my fundamental point, I feel like stands that we have, we have so many departments in the city to provide important services to the community that have been cut deep over the last year or so. And so I I still would would like to, you know, give you the chance to to staff up to that 184 level and 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 look at how we can spend a little bit more money on restoring some of the other services we've lost in the community. So, Sam, my 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 proposal would be to, you know, to approve the adjustment to base with that, with that one additional allocation removed.
Okay, so what I'm going to suggest is that you make that into a motion and that you have to do it at this very moment because we have a couple of other consent things to talk through. But by the time we are done with the consent, I think we, maybe somebody should move the consent with all uncontroversial things. And then we have a vote on on whatever your motion is at that point. Does that sound fair?
Yeah, that works.
Okay, and I I have a question that I want to ask staff before we go on. And I'll direct this to you, Chris, and then others can follow up. But, Chris, I heard from staff, I think you, in fact, that there was threats made to park staff today who were giving notice in an encampment. Could you give us a little bit of information about that? Yeah. Or Ally, either one.
Yeah, I might look to Ally Rhodes, who who knows more of the details.
Sure, I'll just share that it had nothing to do with encampments. The employee was mowing in a park near the adjacent civic civic area and was threatened with a metal pipe and some pretty awful words.
Okay, very good. I just wanted, Chris had texted me about that, so I just wanted more details. This wouldn't have been anything related to there wouldn't normally have been a police presence with what that staff person was doing. Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. So, Aaron, you have it to do by the time we're done with the consent, and we will deal with the specifics at that point. With that, moving on through the consent agenda, we have item N, which is the continuation of our hearing on the nonconforming use review for 891 12th Street. And staff, we gave staff instructions at the last meeting to prepare conditions, and we gave some detail about those conditions. So I think staff has those, and we have 30 minutes roughly set aside here to talk through those. So I'll turn it to staff.
So I'll see. Sloan, are you ready?
I'm ready. All right. So, good evening. So as you described, the item tonight is a continuation of a discussion regarding an application for a nonconforming use review to renovate the historic structure and convert the boarding house to 16 dwelling units. Ryan or Emily, is there a PowerPoint? There we go. And so the intent of the presentation is to go through the additional conditions and modifications that were prepared by staff to address comments made by council at the hearing on May 4. Next slide, please. I might be able to get control. Here we go. So the application, as you know, must be reviewed for consistency with the criteria set forth in subsection R 9215 of the Land Use Code. And a determination on this application is a criteria-based decision. Planning Board approved the application in February with a list of conditions which were intended to address neighborhood concerns and ensure that the use would be compatible with the surrounding area with an acceptable amount of impacts. Council called up the planning board decision in March and on May 4 held the quasi judicial hearing to review the proposal. Council closed the public hearing and continued discussion to the meeting tonight to allow staff to draft conditions as was directed. Planning staff has been working with the city attorneys to prepare the conditions and modifications which were forwarded in the memo. Those were also reviewed with the applicant and their legal representation, and they have agreed to the changes. So I'm just going to talk quickly through the modifications that were made since the last hearing. Maybe. Go back. All right. Well, the first one is the quiet hours. So the modification is intended to address concerns regarding noise impacts and general disruptions to the neighbors. So the duration of quiet hours have been extended to 8:00 PM until 8:00 AM, seven days a week. The next modification is that the entire property will be considered comprehensively as a single address for enforcement purposes rather than as individual residential units. The next condition is regarding marketing materials, which has been modified to indicate all forms of payment are acceptable, including Section 8 vouchers. A condition has been added that requires reporting to the city on an annual basis to ensure compliance with the conditions of approval in the Good Neighbor Agreement. The check-in would consider at a minimum noise complaints, police visits and code violations. The first check-in would be to council, and then the two subsequent check-ins would be to city staff. Next just requires that the Good Neighbor Agreement would be updated to reflect all of the modifications made to the corrections. And then lastly, additional minor changes were recommended by staff to provide some clarification for enforcement purposes and just based on input provided at the hearing and also from neighbor representatives. So some additional clarification was provided around the onsite management, which would be required 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The parking permits and how that would interact with the neighborhood parking program. And with staff or with that, staff recommends approval of the case with the motion provided in the memo. And we're happy to answer any questions as always.
Thank you, Sloan. And with that, bring it to council. Questions? Comments, feedback? Mark?
Yeah, um, did I correctly read that the applicant is only going to be required for three years to report on on its compliance with the Good Neighbor Agreement? Or am I in there wrong?
That's correct. That was what staff heard in the last hearing was that it would be for three years.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Mary?
Yeah, thank you, Sam, and thank you, Sloan. Just a quick question. We were shown a video of the Oak House having a party and what is the likelihood that something like that might occur, given the quiet hours of 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM? All the time?
I'm not sure I can comment on the likelihood. I could say that it, from what was shown, that that would be a violation of their approval if at 12:30 at night there was amplified music and yelling and so forth.
And then so that would be a violation and then it would go to that address. And 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 so that would also be a case where there's the 24/7 onsite management. So presumably the management would step in prior to that, and that's the intent of that. So okay, thank you.
I can't get my raise hand button up either right now. It was working, but no, it's, it's not. And you know, obviously, we don't have a decibel reader on that video, but maybe to Tom, like, to me, that already looks like it would violate our city noise ordinance. Is that, so I guess I'm I'm a little bit confused as to how this will make this better for the hill if we've got quiet hours. I understand there's going to be the, you know, the internal enforcement, but shouldn't that already not be happening, basically? Assuming it's over a certain decibel level, which it looked like it probably was.
It's hard to say what the decibel level is from a video like that, but that's that's entirely possible, Rachel. We've got lots of noise complex and the police investigate now.
Okay, thank you.
So so Tom, I'll colloquy on that. If this quiet hours condition is in place and something like that occurs where police are called for midnight noise violation. And it's clear that two things happened. There was the noise violation that the police can intervene on, and there was the violation of the conditions. What will happen as a result of the violation of the conditions if those hours are not maintained?
Well, Sam, I believe the law is that someone can file a complaint with the planning board, and the planning board can issue a sanction, including prohibiting occupancy.
Got it. So it is a pretty severe list of consequences that could be levied if this is an ongoing problem.
Yeah, I would say it's more severe than our general noise code.
That's what I was guessing. Mirabai?
Mine's not really a question. It's just kind of colloquying on that in terms of, yeah, that can happen. But the question is, especially knowing this planning board and whoever knows what's going to happen with future, is that really going to happen? Just because a resident files a complaint doesn't mean the planning board is going to go in their favor. And so once we put this in, it's a forever thing. And this neighborhood that was somewhat enjoyable, forgetting the fact that they're having to sleep in noiseproof rooms and having PTSD or mental problems from the noise that they're experiencing from from lax sleep, this is just gonna I don't know. I I don't know why we're not listening to our residents and instead supporting people who don't vote and pay taxes here, but that's it.
Mary?
Yeah, so Mirabai's comments raised a question for me. And if the, I guess the question is, is there criteria, clear criteria as to how the planning board would make a judgment on such a complaint?
Mary, I think the criteria are in the conditions. So they would, they would determine whether the conditions were violated.
And so there's no subjectivity. A party is being held between 8:00 PM and 8:00 AM, and that would be a violation.
That would be my view.
Okay, thank you.
And Mary, I'd like to follow up to also to Mirabai's point. If somebody makes a complaint to planning board, does that set it up so that council could call up their decision?
I don't know the answer to that, Sam. David Gears on the call. He might know and I can also take a quick look at the law.
That'd be great.
David, do you know? He's probably studying the library stuff. Let me go take, oh, there he is.
Yeah, I can look it up.
Okay, we'll come back to that. Thank you. Counsel, any other comments, questions or discussion? Adam?
In Mary's first comment, she said something about 24/7 onsite presence, and that's not the case, if I remember correctly, right?
No, there's no, there's not, not a condition we asked to be drafted, right?
Well, there, there is that language about 24/7. Condition D, at least one onsite manager shall be present on the property generally 24 hours a day, seven days a week when tenants are residing on the property.
And that came from planning board? Is that correct?
With some additions.
Okay.
That's where I missed it. I appreciate that clarification. Thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion of this? Because if we move on, this will be part of the motion to pass the consent agenda. So, Mark?
Yeah, I want to first acknowledge that the new conditions for the Good Neighbor Agreement do improve it considerably. However, I still have a number of reservations about this transaction. First, you know, quiet hours are only going to be effective to the extent that they're enforced. And I'm not sure why this set of undertakings is going to be more enforceable than our previous efforts to control noise, trash and poor behaviors. This GNA pushes the enforcement obligation down to the applicant, but as we've just discussed, it is the city that will be required to determine whether the applicant is in compliance. I am not assured, given our history of not rigorously enforcing restrictions on these kinds of behaviors, that this GNA will be any more enforceable simply by imposing penalties on the applicant. Number two, I don't understand why the reporting requirement expires in three years. It seems to me at $1,300 per bedroom as a rough number, the applicant will be receiving rental income of $62,400 a month. At that level, I don't think it's unduly burdensome to require an annual report going forward. The community concerns remain constant, but the identity of those that are leasing space in Marpa House is going to be constantly in flux and the behaviors of those residents may be different from one year to the next. I would ask that neighbors should at least have a minimal security and an annual report. And again, to the extent that we've required onsite management, I'm a bit encouraged by that. And lastly, I'm afraid that in going down this path, we've once again abandoned the hill community and taken an expedient road despite our continual lip service that we offer them. You know, again, we've communicated the message that this community is on its own. And if the next time a developer offers to buy their property, they should take the offer because their days as a vibrant residential neighborhood are numbered. I respect the contrary view and decision of this council, but on that one, I simply have to dissent. Thank you.
Mark, Rachel?
Thanks to Sloan for the option Y to get my hand raised to work. So I'm going to agree a little bit with Mark and then disagree a bit with Mark. I agree that it does feel like we are giving, paying lip service to the hill. You know, we did an out of five and said that we're going to, you know, kind of send some help in the cavalry and we're still getting, you know, they're still putting up with constant noise issues and, and, you know, quality of life issues there. And, and I can understand why they feel abandoned. So I agree with that and hope that we will bear that in mind when we're looking at things like the budget, because we need to budget some code enforcement and help there. But on this particular property, it sort of feels like we would be trying to sort of hold one property owner accountable for what ails the whole hill. So I would like to see, you know, sort of the, the fixes that we're trying to come up with for this property applied more broadly to the hill and put our time into that issue and broader solutions than what one property can, can hope to accomplish. And I think that, you know, a lot of these agreements sound like they've, they have been, I think, approved by the property owner and that's great and should be a helpful model, but I don't want to conflate sort of the, the hill issues with this one property. So that's where I'm coming from.
Very.
Is there any reason why we could not change the three-year reporting to annually?
But so, so just to be clear, Mary, it's annually for three years. Do you mean to extend that annual reporting requirement indefinitely?
Right, to just remove for three years and just say annually.
Okay, got it.
Correct.
Is Sloan or Tom, is there a reason we couldn't change that here?
Uh, no, I'd want to make sure the, to just give the applicant an opportunity to object. I assume the applicant has somebody on the phone that they could call, they could speak to. But you could do that. That was, I think, a specific one from council. I had missed that and wrote it originally as every year and then Sloan caught it and fixed it based on what council said. So we were just following council direction.
Yes. Yes, okay. Anything else, Mary? Okay, Bob?
Uh, just two things. I, if Mary's proposal was to make it beyond three years, I'd be fine with that too. I think I was the person who suggested three years, but I just pulled it out of the air. You know, if, if that's the will of council, I think perpetual annual reporting would be just fine. And then I just, I couldn't, can't pass the opportunity to respond to Rachel calling the cavalry. And that's exactly what item I on our consent agenda is, is to provide additional police force for problem areas. So that is the cavalry. And if you want the cavalry to help our problem areas, including the hill, vote yes on item I. Thank you.
Could I colloquy on that?
Sure.
Because I actually had a question about that. Rachel mentioned we need code enforcement in the area and is it code enforcement or is it police enforcement that's required?
Well, if that is to me, I will say
It's to staff, actually.
Okay.
And I'll stand corrected. That was item F, not I.
So Tom, I think that might be you.
Code enforcement is actually part of the police department, although there's a separate zone in code enforcement. I think, Mary, to be honest, you, from my view, we need both. The police handle some things, other things like trash and snow removal and stuff is code enforcement. But I, of course, defer to merits. That's why I was being quiet.
Thanks, Tom, but I would agree with your assessment. We need both. And Rachel, the, the issues on the hill are very complicated too. And unfortunately, that requires police intervention as well as code and some type of abatement process as well.
Thank you.
So I'll just, I guess, ask, because then I'm a little bit confused on what we're being asked for. My understanding with the six additional police officers is it is, you know, specific to homelessness solutions and not things like parties on the hill at night. So that, that's, that feels different than what we have discussed. So I'm just hoping to get some clarification to Bob's point. If we're just going to keep going back and forth, we can.
Thanks. Was that, was that a question for me, Rachel? I'm sorry.
I think so. I think you're probably the best person to answer it.
So as I presented on 4/27, I saw this team as multifaceted, multi-dimensional. Heavy emphasis on assisting with the process of the encampment posting, the encampment cleanup, providing safety, supporting the new ambassador program because that will be vitally important for their success. I've been, I've done this in Cincinnati. If they don't have proper police support, that'll be complicated. And then, as I discussed, I thought I would try to reinforce our low numbers on our impact team on the hill and also try to impact our San Juan community, which I feel is very neglected due to the lowering of the numbers over the past two years in that specific neighborhood. And so I kind of saw this as a multifunctional, multi-dimensional team of officers that would be highly trained in those areas that we discussed on the 27th.
Thanks.
So I would just say that I would support the continuation of an annual meeting for the neighbors if this passes, which it looks like it will. And just to kind of state that yes, we, we had promised to send the cavalry in and by allowing this property to move in, we're just extending the border of the problem area. And though I hope the Good Neighbor Agreements and the guardrails that we've put in work. But seeing as there are so many police, so many police complaints still continuing and the parties happening as we saw, I don't have high hopes. I think that as we continue to allow each little bit, it has a massive impact and the noise just moves further and further into these quiet neighborhoods that, as many of these residents have stated themselves, they're not entitled NIMBYs. They work hard for what they've purchased and, and what we're doing is just it's, it's just unreal to me that we're not listening to our residents. I mean, we're getting lambasted for the homeless issue. So maybe, but that one's so split on half and half, but this is very, very clear that the neighborhood does not support this and those are who vote for us and those are who, who pay taxes to this town. So I'll just leave it at that. I think this is extremely unfortunate.
Okay, so what I've heard so far is either people don't like this at all or they like the conditions with the possible exception of extending the annual reporting requirement indefinitely. Tom, do you want to see if there's any response from the applicant on that potential change?
Uh, yeah. Is there anybody from the applicant team here?
This is Ryan. There are a few folks here. Let me let them in and then they'll be able to speak one moment.
Mr. Johnson, we can see you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. The applicant is not opposed to the continual annual reporting requirement.
Thank you. That's excellent. Chris Spencer. So with that, we have the applicant agrees and Tom, would you be able to include that tonight just by a deletion of a few words or would we want to bring it back on June 1st?
I think we could do that. If you give me a moment, I'll look at it and make a suggestion. I just wanted to ask whether or not there should be some limit on this. Whether it's, it's 10 years or 20 years so that we don't have a planning department wondering what they're getting every year in 30 years.
Um, we'll take that into consideration, Tom, and discuss it right now. Mary?
Thank you.
Yeah, I have another question for Tom. Is there any reason why we could not put a limit on the number of violations that could occur at the address? And, and in addition, say that if you have more than this number of violations, something really egregious happens, which could be something like losing your rental license. I don't know. But is there any reason, could we do something like that?
You, you could. I'm not sure we could do that, draft something like that tonight. The, the, one of the remedies that the planning board can impose is revoking a rental license. So that's already a possibility. There's a whole list of remedies and David was kind enough to pull up the section that says the planning board reviews these complaints. So they have, already have that in there, which you'd be suggesting, I guess, is some objective measure to direct the planning board. And if you wanted to do that, you could. I, I'm not, I'm not all that comfortable with drafting it on the fly.
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of my intent because I think to Mirabai's point, to leave it kind of as a subjective decision by a body that is constantly changing makeup. I would feel more comfortable with this if we had some objective criteria and I'm open to some criteria other than the number of violations.
Well, Mary, there are some objective criteria already in the conditions. For example, the quiet hours are violated if anybody has amplified sound outdoors. So that, that, that to me is an objective criteria. So there aren't a lot of them, but there are those things that, that are either true or they're false. And planning board would assess whether there was a violation and have to decide what the penalty was. And to answer Sam's original question, there is no call-up provision for council from a planning board hearing on a violation. It's a quasi judicial hearing that ends with them. Review would be to the courts under 106 action.
Thank you, Tom. Rachel?
Um, and I'm just thinking more broadly, is that something that we could have in an ordinance that, you know, any property owner, any property that has X number of noise ordinance violations in X amount of time loses their rental license? As we're looking at hill issues broadly? I mean, you have to limit it to this particular address?
No, and we already have a provision for revoking rental licenses, I believe, both basically for violating the conditions of the license. And there may be something on occupancy as well, if I'm remembering correctly. But yes, that's something you could do.
All right, thanks.
Okay. I'll just speak for myself. I think these are pretty good conditions. I would propose that we put a 10-year limit on the annual reporting per Tom's suggestion because I, I think that having it be infinite is, doesn't make sense. Things could change in a lot of different ways. And Mary, I guess my discomfort with having something that's like a criteria-based kind of harsh penalty for a certain number of violations is it does not allow for mitigating circumstances, whatever they might be. Say somebody else put amplified music and did a pop-up or something like that. Is it the fault of the the property operator that that happened? So I guess I'm just a little concerned. We've seen in the past historically that strict guidelines around sentencing can have unintended consequences and I'm just a little nervous about that. But I would suggest, just to put it to bed, that we put 10 years, Tom, instead of three and I'll see what other council members have to say to that. Mark?
Um, just a, I, I like Mary's suggestion of defining the obligations and the penalties. I think that would go a long way towards reassuring a lot of people that there's some teeth to this. And that it's actually an enforceable agreement. I have a question for staff. What is the rate or the incidence of revocation of rental licenses on the hill? Is something that's happened? Is it like finding a unicorn or is it something that, that has been done and happens every once in a while?
I, I don't know that it happens much anymore. When we first started short-term rentals, we did a bunch of revocations of licenses where we converted them to long-term because people weren't living there. That was basically our preferred remedy. We haven't had that problem. Once people realized that it was something we were enforcing very strictly. I don't remember. I, I obviously I don't keep track of this on a daily basis, but I don't recall seeing any of those more recently.
Okay. And again, going back to Mary's comment, I think having standards matters. If it becomes purely a judgment call, you don't really have much. If you've got a standard-based agreement in which a certain number of violations carries with its serious consequences, I think that would be if not entirely satisfactory to the community, would certainly be somewhat reassuring to the community. If not entirely satisfactory to the community, would certainly be somewhat reassuring to the community. And I think it would give some teeth to what we are negotiating. With with the applicant. And so I would be very supportive of anything along those lines. And I urge us to do that.
Everybody.
I'll just second what Mary's idea and what Mark just said regarding that. I think something that has teeth would. Go along when making this more palatable for the neighborhood. And then just regarding what you stated, Sam, about the ten-year. Sunset on on the annual meeting. What I would like to do instead is to see what happens in ten years. So on the tenth year, if this goes through. That the neighbors' voice, whether or not they would like to continue having this, if it's been useful. Or if they feel like things have been fine, they can let it go. I think that it should be assessed at ten years rather than just saying no, because. What if it's been ten years of turmoil and all of a sudden now they have absolutely no voice other than? If the laws are broken and they have to go to planning board. So I I think just having that kind of in there to say, let's assess it at the ten-year mark and see. What we want to do would be something I'd be more in favor of.
You know, going back to the the point of the criteria, I I think where Sam and Rachel are, I I'm, I I think we should have some criteria. I'm just citywide. And so we don't. So that we don't fall into a trap of being accused of being subjective. I'm not sure that doing it on one property makes sense. Number one, it seems. A little inequitable to that particular property and not having it apply to all the other properties that might cause problems. So I I think I'm with Rachel and Sam to say, I I'd be happy to revisit our noise ordinance and consequences of that. But I think it should be a a ordinance in citywide rather than doing it on a property by property basis. And I'm happy to commit. To have that taken up in the next council, if that's the will of of the majority of of that next council.
Thank you, Bob. I I'm gonna try and bring us home if I can, so. Look, I'm gonna do a few straw polls just to see where council as a whole is at, if that's okay. The first straw poll that I would like to do is to see if a ten-year. Sunset is acceptable to folks on the annual reporting requirement. So. I'm just gonna ask you to raise your hand if a ten-year sunset is okay, just flat out. One, two, three, four. And five, one, two, three, four, five. So I see five of us, so I think that will be okay, Tom, if you want to change the three to a ten.
Condition number six, changing the number three to a number ten.
Yep, and so I think we have that. And then next, Mary, would you like to frame up? A question for a straw poll about your idea about criteria? Do you want to move ahead with that?
Well, it sounds like. And I I agree that it needs to be citywide. And I'm also thinking that going forward. As part of the initiative for. Bedrooms. That maybe it could be addressed then, the change in the ordinance. But I do feel that we need to have. Either strengthen the objective criterion that Tom mentioned. Or add something additional, and I'm not coming up with anything on the fly right now, but. But if we could add something to that criterion where it's amplified music or. Or. I'm looking for ideas here. And I can, I can, I can tee it up with just, yeah, I I guess I'm withdrawing my suggestion. Of adding the the other criterion on the number of violations.
Okay, that's withdrawn. So I I think we're ready to be able to vote on this. Tom, do you feel like? With that one change that we can vote on this if we want to tonight?
Yes, I I would just like Mister Johnson to confirm that the applicant has no more objections that he wants to voice at this point.
Mister Johnson.
We have no further objections. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel.
I just wanted to clarify something that Bob said. Sorry, I don't need to keep going back and forth, but. Mentioned that the next council would take this up and we did do a not a five. I'm getting a little bit out of. You know, out of the quasi judicial area here again, but. I guess I would just push back a little bit, like, why does it have to be the next council that looks at that? Because we did give a not a five to add this to the work plan, I think. So just timing wise, wanted to flag that.
Yeah, well, we'll, we can come back to it, but probably not on consent agenda, so. So as far as this item goes, I think we're teed up for a vote. When we do vote, those of you who wish to vote against it can. Say yes on the consent agenda, except for the items you do not want to pass. So. I think we're good to move on from this one. Last chance to object. Alright, we're moving on. And then I think our next item that we want to speak to is city attorney, correct? And so we've got Bob and Rachel on that one. Bob, Rachel.
Um, I I'll kick us off real quick, just with an update on the semi-finalist interviews, which we are slated to have on this. Thursday, Friday and Saturday. Each of us is paired with another council member for the interviews and I believe everyone already has their. Time slot and partner lined up. And I I think we've also received an email with some interview materials. And we will get another email probably from Heather Gantz the day before we have interviews. Part of the materials that she will send will be some interview questions. But the subcommittee, which is myself and council member Yates, are asking that each council member also prepare a unique question. That you will ask each candidate. So for the pairs, there should be, you know, between. Between the two of us, like I'm with Mark Wallach, I'll have a question, Mark will have a question, so we will have two unique questions. That we will ask each candidate. And and we ask that you ask each candidate the same questions to to kind of keep a level. Playing field for, so that they're answering the same questions and you're asking the same questions to each candidate. So. Want to see if there's any questions or concerns about the semi-finalist interview schedule or materials or questions. Adam?
When will the semi-finalist interviews be completed?
Saturday at two, I believe.
Perfect, thank you.
And if anyone has significant concerns about coming up with a question, or for your teams, Bob and I are happy. To make some recommendations. Over to Bob. Take that back. Over to Aaron.
Oh, sorry, maybe I'm speaking out of turn. Just remember, there's always, what's your favorite color if you're really stuck? But Sam, do we need to amend the the agenda at some point to get this three O on there? I don't know that we did that earlier for the.
It's a good point. That wasn't on my script, so we probably do need to do that. So before we do anything else. I'll ask briefly, Alicia, is there anything else that we've added since this was published?
It it actually was at the top of your script, sir, that we.
Was it? I'm sorry, I missed that.
That's okay. I didn't know if you wanted to do things differently tonight, but we.
No, I I missed that. I'm sorry. It was after public health briefing. Yeah, it's this one. So I apologize. It was entirely on me. So I guess I will look for a motion to amend the agenda to add item one A, which we've already done and add. A move item eight A. To the consent agenda as item three O and update the title. So could I get a motion?
I moved.
Second.
Any opposed? None. Thank you and apologies for missing that. Thanks, Aaron, for flagging it. And. Okay, and with that, it's over to Bob, I think.
Thanks. So the the second part of our two-part report. Is some great news. We. Have received a confirmation from Sandra Yanis to serve as our interim city attorney. You all know that Tom will be leaving us next month, and because we don't know how long it'll take us to get through the interviewing and hiring process. For the city attorney, we wanted to ensure no gap in coverage. And so Sandra Sandra has been with. Has been a lawyer for about twenty-three, twenty-five years. She's been with the city for almost all that time as the deputy, as a city attorney, deputy city attorney now. And. And 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 Rachel and I and Jen Sprinkle talked to her and and Jen Sprinkle, HR director, and. Sandra seems very excited about doing it. I let her speak for herself in a few minutes. So we wanted to make a motion that. Sandra Yanis be appointed as is interim city attorney effective. May twenty-fourth, so that she and Tom can have a period of overlap before Tom's departure. And then she'll serve in that role until until we have a city attorney, permanent city attorney hired. And so that's the, that's why we moved this up to the consent agenda, so we could make that motion.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions, feedback? Sandra, I see you. I thought I'd turn to you and see if you want to give us any thoughts about the possibility of us voting to appoint you as interim.
Uh, yeah, I'm happy to to make some comments. I'm, I would be happy to do the job and I would be looking forward to working with all of you. And so if you still are inclined to to make the appointment, then I will happily serve.
Very good. Thanks very much. Rachel.
I just wanted to say thank you to to Sandra for being willing to serve in this capacity, assuming that this motion passes it. It really makes, I think, all of our jobs a lot easier and we have a lot of confidence in you and I'm just deeply grateful. So, thank you.
I'll echo that as well. Thank you all and thank you, Sandra. So with that, I believe that we are ready to have a motion on the consent agenda. It will be roll call. So you will be able to indicate your thoughts as we vote on it. Rachel.
I had one question on a non-controversial piece of the agenda, and I'm trying to pull up and view my notes. It is, I just hadn't heard of it before, so I just wanted to ask a couple of questions on possession and consumption of alcoholic beverages in public. Prohibited. It looks like we would be changing to or expanding where you cannot drink alcohol, like on open space, if I'm understanding it correctly. So I just wanted to know.
Yes.
I can respond to that.
Answer that.
Yeah, I can answer that. So it's really just clarifying the law that this, it's something that we've been doing. For quite some time anyway, which is enforcing alcohol restrictions on open space land. But there was a phrase in our ordinance or in our code that. Indicated that it could only be enforced within the city limits, so we removed that. And then there's also. Some more less less substantive changes to park names and that sort of thing. And actually, Ally is here. She might be able to address that as well.
Okay, that's awesome. And so if I'm hearing you correctly and and look forward to hearing from Ally too, it's not really a change in. Practice or procedure, it's just clarifying, because I thought maybe we were proposing, you know. Something that might impact what people currently, I don't know if people drink on open space and it sounds like it's already illegal, so that they are not. But was wondering what the impetus was for doing it now. And it sounds like the impetus is just cleaning things up that are already happening. Is that accurate?
Yes, and and the other thing I guess I want to add is that. There's always been the ability to request an alcohol permit for like. Facilities and that sort of thing, so that would still continue. But but there's been a bar. Of no alcohol forever, so.
Alright, thanks.
Okay, very good. Bob?
I was just giving a process suggestion. I would be happy to move the entire, I know that Aaron has an alternative for F and and. We'll need to test to see if that alternative is. Governor's majority, or if F is presented by staff, governor's majority. I was gonna suggest. Moving the entire consent agenda, see how the votes come out. If people would like to. Vote in favor of Aaron's alternative. They can vote no on F and then we can vote on the alternative. Or we could vote on Aaron's alternative first and then vote on the consent agenda, but I'm happy to move the entire consent agenda if that's, that's the easiest way to do it.
Bob, I hate to mention Robert's rules, but perhaps this time it might be easier to use them. If you just move the consent agenda. Aaron can then make a motion to amend your motion, and if that passes, then it's amended. If if it fails, your original motion gets voted on.
Brilliant. I moved the consent agenda.
Tom, I was about to make the same suggestion for the process.
Okay, we need a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Aaron.
Great, so I move that we amend item F so that we. Amend ordinance eighty-four sixty-three by striking section two, which is the general fund appropriation for additional police officers. From additional revenue in the amount of three hundred and eighty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars.
We need a second. Okay. Aaron, would you like to speak to your motion, your amendment?
Uh, well, I think we had the conversation earlier, so you know, just reiterate that that desire to give the police department time to to hire. While we devote some additional funds to restoring other service cuts that have been made in the community.
Okay, so we have a amendment on the table, motion and a second. So I will ask all in favor of Aaron's amendment, raise your hand. One, two, three, okay. Opposed. One, two, three, four, five, six. So Aaron, your motion does not pass. The consent agenda has been moved and it it will bring us back to a question about June first. But it doesn't affect the motion on this consent agenda right now. So. Alicia, I guess over to you for a roll call now.
Alright, sir.
So I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, but doesn't someone want to make an amendment to the Marpa House conditions?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I I meant to embed that into my motion. So I I my my motion for the consent agenda was with the one change that Tom's made on the annual reporting on Marpa House.
Second.
Okay, so we have that moved in second with that embedded in it. Thank you, Aaron. Okay, I think we're ready to go. Anything else I've flubbed so far? Okay, if not, Alicia, maybe we're ready for a roll call.
If not, sir, we'll start again. It's all. Alright, council member Young.
You caught me off guard. Yes.
Rocket.
Uh, I'll vote I on everything except nay on three F.
Friend.
I'm the same as Aaron, yes on everything with the exception of three S, F, F as in Frank, I think. Thanks.
Joseph.
I.
Nagel.
I on everything except for nay on November.
November.
On N, on item N.
Okay, thank you. Alright. I'm a military spouse, I should know that. Sweatlick.
I on everything, no on FN.
I'm sorry, no on F.
And N.
And N, okay.
No FN.
Wallack.
You're on mute, Mark.
Of course I am. I on everything except item M.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yates.
I on the entire consent agenda.
Alright, sir, the consent agenda passed.
And what were the counts on F and N, please?
F had. Three nays. And N had three nays.
Okay, very good. So everything passes unanimously except six, three on F and six, three on N. Junie, I see your hand.
Yeah, I I just wanted to make a comment on Aaron's proposal and. I listened to everyone's conversation earlier and I didn't add very much because I thought. I couldn't go back on my vote from the previous week because. I was thinking of the consistency of voting yes for something and then turning around and saying no. Knowing that maybe the police department or chief mayor is already making plans based on that funding. So I just didn't want to go back on my words.
Thank you, Junie. And with that, before we move on. I want to turn, Tom, I'm sorry, go ahead, Tom.
Sam, I just wanted to thank you for appointing Sandra as interim city attorney. She's an outstanding lawyer. She's been on our management team, I think, now for four years and has so well improved the management of the office. If the office is in really good hands and I appreciate your appointing her. Thank you. And I'm also going to say, since David Gere is here to run, to do the rest of the meeting, I'm going to leave. So good night, everyone.
Good night, Tom. Thank you.
Before you leave, Tom, can I, I'm sorry, I don't have.
Yes, Sandra.
Function, but I just want to thank council. I'm really excited for the opportunity to serve as interim city attorney. And I really look forward to working with you all. I'm also thankful that Tom and I will have some overlap time before his time, before he leaves on June eleven. He's an unbelievably helpful and supportive resource and we have a great team of attorneys and paralegals at CAO. They are incredibly talented, dedicated and collaborative. And I'm confident that we'll have a smooth transition in the interim and eventually to a new city attorney. So thank you all. I appreciate it.
Congratulations, Sandra.
Congratulations and thank you. That's awesome. And thank you, Tom. Okay, so what I was going to turn back to do, and Aaron, this is totally your or Rachel's call. Is before we leave the subject, do you want to go ahead and and. Pull off the adjustment to base from the June first reading?
Thanks for asking, Sam. I think maybe I'll sleep on it to consider my options. We got, we got a couple of weeks.
Sure. I just thought we'd do it in public if you already knew. So, okay, very good. With that, Alicia, back to you.
All right, sir. And congratulations, Sandra. On our agenda item next, we have the public hearing. Item five A is the public hearing and direction regarding next steps on library funding and governance.
All right, well, I will lead off and I'm. Good evening from the municipal building. I have to say the fluorescent lights are. Kind of cast me in a rather brutal tone, but I guess we'll get through it.
You look good, David. It's okay.
Well, as I said, I'm David Gere and I'm with the City Attorney's Office and with me tonight is our light, library finance and governance staff team. From finance, we have Kara Skinner and Devin Billingsley. From the library, David Farnin and Jennifer Ferris is here. From our office, Janet Michaels, who has been kind of the laboring war and a lot of the legal work on this project. And then finally, Kim Seder, who we have invited to our meetings a number of times before, but Kim. Is in private practice and an expert on the law of library district formation and governance. So we hope with all of these people, together with the information in the packet. We will be able to answer any questions that you may have regarding tonight's agenda item. So next slide, well, I guess somebody, I thought somebody would run the slideshow. Whoever's in charge of that, I'm on the second slide. All right, tonight, we look forward to hearing from our community at the public hearing. In our presentation, we'd like to recap the council's discussion at the February twenty third study session. And we'll focus on funding and governance options. There are essentially two options on the table beyond the status quo at this point. First is funding through a library district and in the alternative through a dedicated municipal property tax. Slide three, please. As I know, we are looking forward to hearing from the public tonight. On the funding and governing options that we've identified for our library services. The, in terms of the governing options that we have in front of us today, there is. The library being governed by you, the city council, with the advice of our library commission. Or it is governed by an appointed library district board. So we hope to receive some direction from the council to guide the work plan for the project for the rest of this year and into twenty twenty two. Slide four, please. At the February twenty third. Study session, the staff and the council discussed stable funding sources to address community goals. That were adopted in the twenty eighteen library master plan. Staff presented a number of options for establishing library districts either through. City and county resolutions or by a petition of the registered voters. We also presented information on service areas for, for the city and like in district type approaches. And we also provided an overview of our library services and the total cost of those services both. Presently and as anticipated by the master plan. And finally, we discussed the approaches to governance that include a city option and a district option. Slide number five, please. I think actually that is slide number five. Simply for discussion purposes, staff drafted a proposed ballot measure, which is an attachment D that would amend the charter to increase. The property tax mill levy, mill levy limitation, create a more four mills. Property tax revenue earmark and together with all the associated table language that's necessary. For a tax increase. This is just simply as an example. If a municipal option is selection selected, of course, the library will continue to be operated as a city department. With city support, the council governing it again with the advice of the library commission. And it would be those two bodies that would be responsible for making budget and policy decisions for the direction of our library. City property owners would fund the whole cost of library services through a property tax. And although revenue would continue to flow into the city. City and county residents and other visitors would no longer be contributing to. Funding library services by sales taxes on purchases made in Boulder, as is the case now. But of course, if we do have additional sales tax, the council could also use. Any of those additional revenues. That it may find available to fund library capital needs. And then depending on the mill levy selected, which I'll talk a little bit more about later. The council may need to look at alternatives to fund expansions to the library system. Including local library services to areas like Gun Barrel. These are the types of policy considerations that will need to be addressed in the future. Slide six. If the city went with a municipal property tax option. We anticipate that it would provide a very stable funding source to meet community goals for library services. One of the advantages of this approach is that the governance is. Very well established and will not change. And then, of course, our library staff members will continue to. Be city employees. Slide seven. So this slide is a. Work plan for a municipal option and it's actually a rather simple work plan. The main work item would be to engage the community to determine the appropriate mill levy. And the preparation and presentation of a ballot question related to raising property tax. Taxes and associated city charge charges. And as I noted, we provided just an example of what that might look like. In the attachments to the staff memo. Slide eight, please. Then there's also the library district option, which we've discussed a lot in the last year, year and a half. Simply again, for discussion purposes, staff prepared a sample resolution for the creation of a district, which is an attachment B. As well as a sample intergovernmental agreement between the city, Boulder County. And the library district and that can be found in attachment D of your materials. The example that we drafted, there's nothing magic about it, but it is based on recurring themes. That have been addressed in the creation of numerous library districts across the state. If the library district ideas pursue. The library will be operated by a new governmental entity with a board of directors. That will be responsible for those taxing and policy decisions. The intergovernmental agreement, as we've talked about in the past, must be established between the city, the county. And the district to address issues relating. From changing the library from a city service to a more regional service that would be provided by the district. Library district employees would be, or city library employees would be transferred to the district. And then, of course, if the district affiliates with Colorado Public Employees Retirement Association. The district would assume the, that responsibility for its employees. All right. Next slide, please. So if, if we go the library district route and it's established with an approved revenue source. Staff anticipates that, again, since it's a property tax, that the district would have a very stable revenue source to fund. The library and the services that the cities would like, that the city would like both. Within. For property that is within the city limits as well as those in unincorporated Boulder County that are also in the district. There's an appointed board of directors that will govern a district and it has much more of a singular fiduciary. Focus on library services as opposed to the city council that, you know. Has to balance a number of priorities. And then, of course, there's a clear path to funding library services. Outside the city limits and within the district boundaries, which may include areas that use the library, including. Unincorporated Gun Barrel, Niwad and some of the areas in the mountains west of town. So there are two different options. Or two different timelines for district. Formation in the packet materials. The slide up summarizes a work plan found in. Attachment C, option A. The primary difference between the two work plans is when the district itself is formed. Option B, as the district formed in the summer of twenty twenty two. This would allows a little bit more upfront community engagement. Option A has the district formed in October of this year. So if the council directs staff to begin the exploration. Of the library district staff would attempt to implement a work plan to, to form some type of IGA process committee this summer. To explore terms and conditions that will need to be addressed in an IGA. And the IGA will address the city services. That would be provided to the district in the short term, the transition of employees, services and property in the longer term. Over the course of the summer and the early fall, staff will engage the community to learn the preferences for library service. Services and the revenue necessary to provide them. The engagement will need to be inclusive of all the people that would be taxed by the district in the fall. Then the county commissioners and the council would form the library district. In the new year, with the district board appointed, the IGA between the city. County and district will need to be finally negotiated and approved. And then in the summer of twenty twenty two, the library district will need to coordinate with the county assessor to prepare. Prepare for the collection of taxes for the, for the year of twenty two as part of the twenty three. Property tax collection efforts. If the tax is successful. The staff will start the process of implementing the IGA and transitioning from city to district service provision. All right, next slide. This slide presents a number of different funding options that have been discussed and I'm going to walk through this scenario by scenario. Scenario one is a funding. Option where the city's municipal library would have a dedicated property tax that would fund the total cost to meet community. Demand service levels as defined in the master plan and deferred capital maintenance. It also includes funding the budget gap from the COVID nineteen reductions and funding the North Boulder operating expenses. The total cost of that is about fifteen point eight million dollars and it includes. All of the costs for administrative overhead that are provided by the city. The mill levy needed to generate fifteen point eight million dollars is about three point five three mills. Which would result in about a hundred and ninety four dollar increase to the annual property tax bill of a. Home that has a value of about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar number is what we will use to compare the, the cost to a household throughout. The other scenarios. Scenario two demonstrates if the city's municipal library had a dedicated property tax that funds the total cost. Of an expanded service level, generating approximately twenty million dollars a year. Which would, again, since it's a municipal tax, it would only apply to properties within the city. The mill levies needed to generate about twenty million bucks is estimated to be about four point five six mills. Which would result in about. A two hundred and fifty seven thousand dollar increase to the property tax bill. On that eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar house. Then the final scenario is a library district and it's a comparison much like the municipal. Scenario two above is, but it would have a dedicated property tax. Over a larger area that includes the city and portions of unincorporated Boulder County. That would be a part of its service area. It would also fund the expanding. The expanded service level of approximately twenty million dollars a year that's described in scenario two above. For a district, the mill levy needed to generate twenty million dollars is estimated to be about three point eight five mills. So to demonstrate the impacts of that mill levy on. The residential property owners. A residential property owner of a home that was worth eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That it would be about two hundred and fourteen dollars increase for a city. Property and that's in part due because in the charter, we already have a point three three. Mills library dedication. So we're already funding part of that. And then. In the county, it would be a three point eight five mil in, increase in property tax, which would. Cost that eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar home approximately two hundred and thirty four. Thousand dollars or two hundred and thirty four dollars in additional property tax. All right, next slide. All right. So in close, so a lot of this is about moving forward and developing. The staff work plan on how we're going to go forward and explore sustainable funding and governance of the library. We're looking forward to your questions, public comments, and of course, your discussion after that. Again, helping us or helping, helping, we are asking you to help guide us. In what our work plan is going to be on this project for the upcoming year and a half or so. And I guess with that said, I'll just close it and turn it back to the council.
Great. Thanks so much, David. And questions from council? Bob?
Thanks, David. That was a great presentation. Thank you very much for that. Two questions, David. One is. Under either scenario, under option A or option B that you just laid out for us. And there would be some degree of public engagement. I assume that public engagement could potentially include a, a statistically valid poll. I know that there was a poll done in two thousand nineteen. There was some criticism of the methodology and interpretation of that poll. Plus, that poll's. Now gone a little bit stale. It's more than two years old, went on three years old. I assume that if it were the will council and if we could find. Financial support for it, because I know polls are not free. We could poll the community on their preference on option A versus option B versus. Versus not doing any, anything is, is that a possibility?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see why that would be a problem. I would ask my colleagues in like the, the library who. Managed the last poll if they have any. I would ask my colleagues in the library who managed the last poll if they have any comments or thoughts on getting a a survey or a poll together before, at a minimum, we would address the, you know, if we were going to do district formation in the fall or next summer. It looks like David Vernon is.
Yeah, good evening, council mayor. Thank you for the question, Bob. Of course, you could do it if the funding was available. The cost of doing a poll is about $50,000, I think, for the last one. That would make it difficult to meet. I think it would probably make it difficult to meet an October timeline, so you'd be pushing it back to 2022.
Yeah, just a question on that. Thanks, David. If we went with the, the district formation committee that would explore these things. I was a little curious about what the sensitivity run October. So it sounds like under either scenario, there would be no tax vote in 2021. What's the, what's the, what's the driver around having that work done in October? Because we'd still have another year to do the IGA and tee up the tax vote.
Yeah, the, the, the separate dates for scenario A and B and the district scenario were merely if this council wanted to take action on formation of a district rather than going to another council with potentially new members.
Okay, okay, that's fine. But there's no, other than that, there's, there's no reason why that district formation couldn't be in December or January and still have a 2022 vote, is that right?
That's correct, and that's where the timeline B lays out.
Okay, great, thanks, David. And then my final question, it can be probably for either one of you is if we went down the path of option B and formed a group to work on community engagement and thinking about the IGA and so on and so forth. Would, if we did, if we said that tonight, would we be effectively saying that we intend to form a district? And we're tasking that committee with the mechanics around it? Or are we tasking that committee with exploring whether there is community support for the district or potentially other options that might be available? In other words, are we telling them we're going to form a district, tell us what the details are? Are we saying go figure out if we want to form a district? Because those are pretty different questions in my mind.
I would anticipate that it would be both, that there would be some level of community engagement. And then I think also the idea would be that you would have you know, a group of people that's interested in library. In, in the provision of library services, basically helping us draft what, you know, turn that IGA into something that is, that would be more kind of a reflection of, that we could present to council to be a reflection of what the city council feels like that. Both the relationship would be, and then, of course, how you would separate. But I do think that the public engagement would be a very big part of that.
Oh, okay. And, and so would we give that? I'll call it a committee, committee, the option of also recommending to not form a district, that is maybe the fallback to what's now option A, which is to do a dedicated tax, but keep it within the city or potentially based upon the engagement, community engagement they undertake to to do anything. In other words, are we, are we telling them, figure out how to do a district? Are we saying, tell us what's the best way to provide stable funding for the library?
I think that we were thinking of it more in terms of doing it through a district, if that's, if that's the approach the council wanted us to take. And then what we would do is we would try to figure out what that looks like and bring it back to the council at some point. And then the council would say this is acceptable or it's not. And that, you know, ultimately, the decision about whether or not we're going to form a district. Or, or go the municipal option. Or, you know, continue balancing priorities as priorities are balanced through the general fund, that that would be a council decision.
Yeah, I mean, you can see where I'm kind of going with these, this line of questioning. I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about whether this could all be done by October, maybe it can be. And if it does still be on October, I'm a little bit concerned about binding future councils. And, and so that's, that's why I'm asking these questions about trying to understand what this committee would do, particularly if the committee's work is not done under this council on, on, a, a, a future council may have a different set of direction or different pathways to go down. So, okay, thanks.
Well, can I just add one, one last thing on that? So I think the option of the later option, or the, the benefit of the later option, if you, if you will, is that you have, you have time for a lot more community engagement before you take that action of actually forming a district. If you form a district earlier, as we work through the summer and the early option, I think that the district itself, you know, you'll have a board of directors appointed, that you're going to have the district involved with the engagement process as well as the council, and you will have a district formed, of course.
Thanks.
Thank you, Bob. Next, we have Mark nearby and Rachel. Mark?
My first question, I guess, is for staff. If we were to move this year, what work plan items would we not be able to complete that are already part of the work plan? And would be supplanted by this, this effort and process?
I can take that. I, I believe it was addressed in the work plan. City Attorney's Office and the library staff are able to take on this issue through 2021. The finance department and HMR would likely have to have higher contract help to facilitate the committee.
And have we costed out what that would look like in terms of expenditure?
We have not.
Okay. My next question is, what conversations have we had with the county commissioners? On, on this, I mean, ultimately, they're going to have to approve, and it seems a little silly to get too far down the road if they're going to have a different view of this district than we do, either in terms of the mill rate or in terms of the, the boundaries of, of the district. It seemed to me that some of that conversation should be had now, not later.
Yeah, David, do you want to take that or Janet?
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll start and if Janet wants to turn her camera on, she can finish. But we have had some initial conversations with the county staff. And I think that first and foremost for the, you know, and this, this is through the county staff, not the commissioners. But I, I believe that first and foremost on their mind is I, I didn't get the impression that they were particularly interested in talking to us a whole bunch until we commit to a, a process. And then, once we commit to a process and we get behind it, they have just said, you know, they have statutory responsibilities under the library law and they've said that they would fully cooperate to fulfill their responsibilities.
You know, we've gotten a lot of complaints this year about increased the property assessments. And people are obviously grousing about the contemplated increase in their real estate taxes as a result. How valid is it to be using an $850,000 average home number as representative of what the impact of the tax is going to be?
Probably not. You know, I would ask Devon or Cara to help me out with this, but you know, we used $850,000 with the last. You know, at the study session, that was kind of what we used as our comparison model. We all, we all, we all got a little shocker, I think. Earlier this month, when we opened up our property tax assessments, we talked a little bit about that, but we just decided that we would continue to try to keep a, a continue, you know, a consistent set of numbers, but, but I, to your point, Mark, I, I think it's, it's a fair, it's a fair point.
Yeah, I think it's, it's probably time to update that so people
Yeah.
understand and acknowledge and know what it is they're buying into.
Yeah, and Mark, it's relatively simple to figure out. I mean, I think it's, if you look at a residential property, it's about $260 per, it's $26, $26 per $100,000 of value. So for a million dollar home is $260. For a commercial property, it's slightly more than four times that amount. So you'd be looking at roughly $1,016 per $1 million of value of commercial value. So it's, it's, it's a, it is a simple formula and we could adjust it upwards with the new property tax increases. Likely the anticipated mill rate would drop. The mill rate required to generate $20 million a year.
And lastly, once there's a board of directors for this library district, can they subsequently raise taxes again? Are there any limitations other than the people's vote on their ability to, to raise taxes going forward in, in the future if they decide $25 million is the right number or $30 million is the right number for whatever reason?
Yeah, they would have the authority to do that. And they would have to, you know, comply with the voter approval requirements of the taxpayer bill of rights.
And thank you.
Thank you, Mark, nearby, and then Rachel nearby.
Yeah, so this also for staff, just a quick question, and I, I'm sorry, I may have missed this or not understood it. If we move forward with a dedicated tax for the city and it goes to a vote. And let's say the residents don't vote it in, what would happen?
Well, it would put us back at the drawing board. We, it would require the city to either look at a different. You know, the property tax is one revenue mix. So we could look at a different revenue mix. We have, of course, you know, the ability, the status quo option, which is that the library would be funded through a balancing of interests, as, as is always the case with everything that gets funded through the general fund. That would probably, in the short term, be what we would do in terms of library funding.
Okay, and so hold on, sorry. Do we have any, I, I don't remember this just from 2019 when we had done the original survey. Was there any questions asking if the community was in favor of this at that time? And if so, was it favorable? Do you know?
There, there were favorable results, the, the question that council came up around methodology, but the pollster who conducted the poll, which was a statistically valid poll, felt that there were favorable, favorable results at all levels tested. Now favorable to win an election at the highest level was, was something I think anybody would question. But the highest level is far beyond anything we would have asked for anyway. It was asking for something closer to, I don't know, 20% more than what the current ask would be.
Okay, great. And then my last question is if would resident, residents with lower incomes, how would this impact them? Because if the taxes are passed on to renters and whatnot by the landlords, I mean, this is going to have an impact right on our lower income community or have or is that getting too into the weeds at this point?
Well, no, I, I think that it would, you know, when you raise taxes, it comes out of someone's pockets. And, you know, I think, I think it will have an effect on you know, certainly everyone who owns a home and it's another expense to a landlord that, you know, rents a home. So, you know, I'm, I am guessing that if the landlord is landlords would probably be trying to, you know, make some of that up in the rents that they charge.
Thanks, that's it for me.
Thank you, nearby. Rachel and then Mary, Rachel?
I think I have a question for David Farin. I'm just trying to remember the history a bit. What I'm hearing is that we have been considering this for so long that surveys are stale and property evaluations are no longer accurate. And we had already had a hearing on this, I want to say January or February of 2020, and it seemed like we were on track to to move it forward. So my, my history question is sort of I think that there was something with the library champions were maybe going to just bring it to the ballot and then the city decided to maybe work with or something like that. Do you know what I'm talking about? Can you refresh my memory? On the timing and the history?
It has been a while. And so the library champions brought forth a petition, I believe, to the county in 2019. Later in conversations with the city manager's office, they elected to withdraw that petition to put the ballot, to get it on the ballot. In exchange for commitment to make this a topic for council in 2020. We did not have the public hearing in 2020. We were interrupted four days ahead of that public hearing by COVID.
Notes, thank you very much. That was my only question.
Thank you, Rachel. Mary?
Yeah, thank you everyone for your work on this issue. My first question is about the repeal of the Gallagher amendment. What consideration has been given to the potential impact on property taxes? With this new, I mean, talking about surveys being stale, I mean, a lot has happened since then. So what might the impact be on property taxes with the repeal of Gallagher?
You know, so Mary, I'll let Cara jump in. I don't think the immediate impacts are to be obvious. They won't be, they won't all fall at once. But long term, the desire of that bill was to stabilize commercial property taxes so they didn't jump up at larger percentages than residential because of the way Gallagher was. Cara, do you want to jump in there?
Hi, yes, Cara Skinner, Assistant Director. Basically, it's just going to hold the assessment rate constant. And so even though there was a large increase in residential values with this most recent assessment, the residential assessment rate is not going to go down the way it would have in the past. And so people, there used to sort of be an offsetting effect in many years when residential assessed values increased substantially, the residential assessment rate would go down slightly because of Gallagher. And that did not happen now. So residential property owners are going to bear the full sort of, of the full effect of the increase in the market.
Thank you. And my other question is, so say we go the route of forming a district regardless of whether it's A or B, and it goes to the voters on Tabor. What happens if the Tabor measure question does not pass?
Well, so the part of that will be how we negotiate the IGA. And what kind of what we've learned from other communities is oftentimes that the IGA will say something along the lines of you've got a shot at two or three Tabor elections in the, you know, the next three or four years. And if you fail to get a revenue source in place during that time period, that it's basically a poison pill for the district. And then during the interim, the city would, you know, retain all of its assets. So, you know, we would continue until, until a district actually had a revenue source. The city would continue to operate the library system as, as, you know, municipal library system.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mary. So I see no other I'm going to suggest this is an opportunity for a 10-minute break and then we can come back and do the public hearing. Is there any objection from council to a break? Okay, seeing none, let's be back here at nine o'clock and we'll be ready to start the public hearing. Thank you all.
Sam? You're muted.
Mark?
Yeah, I don't know if it's because I have an especially exotic TV, but my wife was unable, channel eight come down on her and we're getting every channel. And I don't know if that was a problem particular to our television or if it's something of greater application. I just wasn't going to mention it.
I gotta report that too, but they put us back on.
Oh, okay.
Maybe maybe. Check in.
How can I live with you and watch you in meetings?
Well, I have to pay her a retainer, you know, on a monthly basis.
Oh, I'm getting I'm getting an update. It's down again from the person who reported to me as well. We got a channel eight problem.
They are on it and trying to fix it now. Just an update.
Move that. That's like a voice from heaven.
Sounded a bit like Taylor to me, but I could be wrong.
They just periodically chime in. Come on, hi.
Actually, it's Emily. From our office, she's handling the presentations tonight.
Who was that, Alicia? I'm sorry.
Richardson.
Oh, cool.
I'm sure she appreciated the voice from heaven because she has truly been an angel to me in the last few days.
Is equally celestial.
All right, it is nine o'clock. Let's see who we got back. One, two, three, four, five, six. We're ready on Mary, Junie, and Erin. There's Mary. When we see Junie and Erin, we will be ready for the public testimony, which means I should probably get myself ready. There is Erin. There's Junie. All right, we are all here. Let me pull up. I can find. Hearing. You know, I need to make sure I got the updated one. Alicia, give me just one second while I pull this up. No, I got it. Thanks very much. There we go. All right. So we will begin our public hearing now on the library district question. Our first three speakers are Julia Hanke, Gina McAfee, and Nicole Spear. We will start with Julia and everyone will have two minutes because we have forty six speakers signed up tonight.
Julia, you're able to unmute yourself and speak now?
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Julia Hanke. I live in unincorporated area of Gun Barrel. I received my first Boulder library card in two thousand while attending CU as a freshman. It has been my pleasure over the last two decades to utilize the library services. When my children were young, we visited the children's programs offered at the main branch weekly. This offered literacy education, time for community building, and exposure to diverse groups of people as well as sanctuary for parents and caregivers of small children. As my children have gotten older, the library has been a wonderful resource for accessing reading materials that interest them. This has helped fuel their interest in reading since it is difficult to purchase so many books when they can read through them so fast. And during the pandemic, my children's school library has been closed due to COVID nineteen restrictions and decreased staffing levels. The Boulder library holds this past year have been a happy source for entertainment and education. I support the library district because despite the drastic cuts as a result of the pandemic and years of underfunding, the library continues to be a critical resource for our community, helping to provide free public services like remote internet access, digital resources, and book hold services. It needs a lot more funding to start backup services again to its previous level. The library needs funding as well to expand and grow into communities that cannot that currently don't have access like Gun Barrel where I live. I hope that creating a district will make having a branch in Gun Barrel possible so that youth will have a safe place to go to study and access resources. I urge city council to vote to form a library district and let the voters decide. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just a moment here. All right, next we have Gina McAfee, Nicole Spear, and Johnny Teeter. Gina?
Um, yes, this is Jenna McAfee, and I wanted to first say that I'm on the speaker's list twice. So you can remove me, the Virginia McAfee. That's I'm the same person. So you can remove that one.
Got it.
I my husband and I lived and raised our children in the Table Mesa area for twenty five years. My kids grew up using both the main library and the George Reynolds Reynolds branch of the library, and they fell in love with libraries. Twenty percent more is how much city of Boulder households and businesses would pay should a dedicated tax be levered levied only within city boundaries. But broadening the tax base to include a larger percentage of users lowers the cost for those within city boundaries while providing a broader set of services. The Boulder Public Library is more than a city service. And in fact, thirty percent of library cardholders are not within city limits. That includes me. I now live in the county in the El Dorado Valley area. But I would like to be a part of the community of voters who gets to decide on long term sustainable funding for the library that I and my neighbors love so much. In a previous meeting about the library, you said you wouldn't want the library funding question to compete within the year's capital tax on the ballot. But when will we hear this council say that the library must be the priority on the ballot? As Bob Gates pointed out in his newsletter, the amount the city would save by the library becoming a district would be roughly equal to the amount council is seeking with this year's capital tax. I ask council to enter into a binding intergovernmental agreement around forming a library district and let the voters decide on funding it. And no more delay, please.
Thank you, Jenna. Next, we have Nicole Spear, Johnny Teeter, and Bruce Norcany. Nicole?
Thank you. Good evening, council, and thank you for your time this evening. My name is Nicole Spear, and I'm a Boulder resident. I'm asking you to support the formation of a library district, which is the most equitable and sustainable way to help our libraries serve the long term needs of our community. Since some speakers with young children had to leave due to the lateness of tonight's meeting, I would like to highlight our library's importance for families. As a parent who struggled to find a space in Boulder where I and my young children felt welcomed, our libraries were literal lifesavers. There are no other free indoor spaces in our community where parents can take young children and find people who are happy to have them around. Even now, it brings me a sense of calm to think back to the afternoons I spent sitting in the libraries while my children played and roamed the aisles looking for books and new friends. It isn't only families with young children who find a sense of community and calm in our libraries. Older folks, English language learners, teens, unhoused residents, students, low income residents, disabled folks. All of these members of our community find welcome in our libraries that can otherwise be hard to find in our city. Our libraries are spaces that bring us together, and I cannot think of a better investment in our city's future than finally putting our libraries on a financially sustainable path. We've been discussing our library's financial future for years. Our failure to create a library district years ago left our libraries dependent on our city's general fund during a financial crisis. And now our libraries have suffered a permanent twenty percent cut. This is unacceptable treatment for an organization that provides such critical services and benefits to our community. I urge you to move forward with forming a library district by resolution so that we can take action to sustain our libraries before the next crisis hits. Our community's well being depends on our libraries. Let's show our libraries they can depend on us. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Next, we have Johnny Teeter, Bruce Norcany, and Nicole Pearlman. Johnny?
Hi, John, two hundred Pawnee Drive. I have a simple message. Just do it. This is the seventh council meeting on library funding in the last three and a half years. Good questions have been asked and answered, and a lot of great analysis has been performed, including the most comprehensive analysis of any department's finances that I have seen in over thirty years. We know that the city has been digging a budget hole for the last twenty years. Costs to deliver services are going up faster than revenue growth. And that's without including the new initiatives added to the budget with every council election. That budget hole is not going away. Boulder's days of double digit sales tax revenue increases are long gone. Costs to deliver services are not going down. Citizens will continue to expect that potholes get filled, public bathrooms get fixed, and that the city provides safe spaces for people to gather because that is how community gets built. We need additional revenues to deliver city services. A library district is the most equitable and transparent way to raise taxes. It's equitable because the cost of delivering this set of services is spread across a broader base of regular users. It's transparent because details on how those dollars are spent must be shared with the community and council each year by law. So be leaders, be bold, just do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Johnny. Next, we have Bruce Norcany, Nicole Pearlman, and Joanne Sullivan. Bruce?
Hi, thanks for allowing me to speak. My name is Bruce Norcany. Live at Sixth and North Street. And I am a strong supporter of a countywide library funding district. Let me explain why. When I was young, I loved roaming through the stacks in library. I could pull out a book, browse through it. And even if I knew nothing about the book or the author, I could take a chance. It was free. And so I'd walk home with an armful of books. And in this way, I was able to read, you know, great authors, unknown authors, et cetera. I was exposed to such a wide range of information and vision and voices. And without the public library, I would have never seen those books. I would certainly have never read them. And frankly, I would not be who I am today. And today, I'm even more enamored of the library because of the online card catalog and the the Flatiron's lending system where we could look at information from many other libraries. I mean, it's even better. We can access access things, put thing, put them on hold and then pick them up later. And the reason I I want to expand this to the entire county is I think we need the funding to get small branch libraries in more parts of the county, expose more people to them. And therefore, we can utilize the resource that we already have, the books and videos, et cetera, expose them to a wider audience. We obviously need the funding from a greater area, but with the technology that we have, we can we can utilize the resources over a much larger area. So I strongly urge you to support the countywide funding district. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Next, we have Nicole Pearlman, Joanne Sullivan, and Renee Morgan. Nicole?
Thank you, everybody. Really appreciate it. And I know, as usual, it's been a long evening. My name is Nicole, and I live in North Boulder, and I have a five year old. And prior to COVID, we were literally at either the main branch or the North Boulder, the North Boulder location probably every other day. I mean, we knew the staff members by name. My son knew the aisles and what was where. We named the fish. We named the trains. The library is literally a lifesaver, not just for parents, but for, you know, for everybody in our community. And you're going to hear that over and over again tonight, I think, from everybody that that has stuck around to speak. So I have two key questions for everybody on council tonight. The first is, why aren't you listening to us as the residents and the voters? And the second question is, why are we wasting our time with this conversation again? You wasting your time? I've been on this Zoom three hours tonight to get to this, but, you know, three years ago, the commission unanimously said that we need a library district. And since then, we've had I've lost track, a dozen meetings, maybe where we've discussed this. And I just, I'm perplexed why council just doesn't listen to the overwhelming support for this and keeps having this conversation. Do we do this? How do we do this? When do we do this? It's very, very clear that there's very strong public support for this. So whatever it takes, please just put it before the voters. Let us vote up or down and then figure it out. And please stop wasting our time and yours having these roundabout conversations when you have over forty people signed up to speak tonight. And you've had dozens signed up. Every meeting that this topic has come up, there's overwhelming public support. So please stop forwarding democracy and let us vote on a district.
Thank you, Nicole. Next, we have Joanne Sullivan, Renee Morgan, and Timothy Williams. Joanne?
Hi, my name is Joanne Sullivan, and I live off of J Road in North Boulder. My two young daughters and I are weekly visitors to the main library. We relied on it before COVID, not just for books, but as a gathering place to meet other young families. Seven years ago, I was lost in this world of parenting. My oldest is seven now. I met with an amazing group of friends at Storytime, and these friendships were so crucial. were so crucial for my mental stability at the time. Many of those friendships are still growing strong as our children grow together. Families need access to their local library branches, and I'm asking council to invest in my library. For the past year, with both of my kids learning from home, the library has been essential to their education and their stability. Our homeschool curriculum is literature-based, and there's no way I could afford to buy all of the required books. And the Boulder Public Library had about ninety-five percent of them. Amazing. Growing up in Brooklyn, I could walk to my library branch from my family's apartment. And their young reader programs and librarians made a lifelong impact on me. I want that for my kids growing up here in Boulder. And to get that, I need council to commit to investing in the library's financial stability. I learned that sixty-six staff members were laid off in the wake of COVID. And as more and more folks get vaccinated, what is the plan to bring these branches back? What's the plan to ensure that the library doesn't endure deeper cuts in the future? And what more does council need to know about the financial benefits of forming a district? Please don't delay any further on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Next, we have Renee Morgan, Timothy Williams, and Carolyn Alden. Renee?
Hi there. I'm Renee Morgan and I live in Boulder County, but I'm going to read a letter from a woman who lives in Boulder proper, the city of Boulder, Sarah Farty. So she begins, Dear Council Members, I'm writing today to express my concern, outrage, and heartbreak over hearing that the council may prove unwilling to save the countywide branches of the Boulder Public Library. I could tell you a compelling story of growing up, the daughter of immigrants in Boulder, of being a child of working parents who needed somewhere to go, of being able to find escape education and friends at the George Reynolds Library. But you should already know the power of the library to elevate communities, to improve early literacy for children, to support small businesses, language learning for immigrant communities, support for families who cannot afford monetized enrichment programs, to bridge the gap between elite academic institutions and the independent researcher, to provide a free communal and safe place to go when other areas may not be accessible. Libraries are the cornerstone of healthy, caring communities. They help create equity through opportunity. And in the midst of a pandemic of civil unrest, of pandering to marginalized communities in Boulder, with promises of prioritized agendas and commitments to equity, you are sitting idle in the face of the exact kind of opportunity you are committing to make. Closing neighborhood branches, the ones that can be walked and biked to and parked near without worrying of cost or time limit of parking, is actively creating inequity and limiting access. Libraries and their programming are examples of the kind of redistribution abolitionist call for. Redistributing funds can be honored by investing in libraries and their programming that brings culture and community and opportunity for free to any community member that needs it. Allow us to vote on the formation of a library district. It is really your only remaining constable action. Sincerely, a concerned, tired, frustrated, and brown resident of Boulder, Sarah Farty.
Thank you, Renee. Next, we have Timothy Williams, Carolyn Alden, and Rachel Daly. Timothy?
Thank you. I'm Tim Williams, Gun Barrel resident and vice president of the Boulder Library Foundation. As a child, I grew up living along the Lewis and Clark Trail. I was fascinated by them and their expedition. I could not understand what would motivate someone to trek off into the great unknown with so much uncertainty and risk. I became so intrigued, my parents took me to the library so I could check out some books to learn more about them. I'd never been to the library or even knew such a place existed. Not only did I discover books on Lewis and Clark, but I realized I could become my own explorer, traveling toward whatever interest I desired. While there, I stumbled upon a book about paper airplanes and learned techniques that allowed me to enter and win a competition. I was hooked. I went on to learn about music, geology, the weather, languages, electronics, all manner of things I would have never had exposure to otherwise. I dare say I would not be the person I am now without those experiences. From that beginning, I've been blessed with a lifetime love of learning and growth. And I've been fortunate to live in communities that have supported that via libraries and other community resources. Boulder's libraries are a treasure, but they've been treated as an afterthought for far too long as council chases other more shiny objects. The funding decisions of the last decade have strained the libraries, and the crippling effects of the pandemic have laid that bare. Yet, in the face of that, the library has persisted and provided Wi-Fi access to hundreds of families on the wrong side of the digital divide, worked to keep kids engaged in reading and learning, and strive to keep seniors engaged in the community in the face of isolation and loss. A wise friend of mine has always said that change occurs when the pain of staying the same is greater than the pain brought about by the difficulty of change. We are at that point with our libraries. The pain of staying the same is far too great to continue with the status quo. The library's future is not currently sustainable, nor is the future of Boulder's overall budget with so many priorities to juggle. I urge you all to invoke your own inner explorer and explore the district possibilities to achieve sustainable library funding. We must act decisively to ensure we continue to be a community of explorers rooted in curiosity, learning, and growth. Thank you.
Thank you, Timothy. Next, we have Carolyn Alden, Rachel Daly, and Andy Saylor. Carolyn?
Hi, my name is Caroline Alden, and I'm really excited about the prospect of finally seeing improved long-term stability for the Boulder Public Libraries with district formation. About every other weekend, I take my three-year-old to the main branch, and first we grab my stack of books from the hold shelf, and then we head over to pick out books from the curated staff favorite stacks. Then we head out to play in the playground. And now that COVID restrictions have been lifted, we can also go to the kids' section and check out the fish, practice Spanish with a librarian, and do community arts and crafts. I actually, just yesterday, I learned that the very first customer of my startup company here in Boulder actually found out about us by reading one of my academic papers in his local library in Tulsa, Oklahoma. And that was when he was tasked with, you know, going to research some methane detection technologies by his CEO. So bottom line, I mean, as you already know, and all the other folks tonight have said, libraries are an incredibly valuable public resource in so many ways. I'm super lucky to be able to live really close to the main branch here in Boulder, and I just think it's so important that this resource be expanded to others in the broader area. So I'm asking the council this evening to please take the steps now to start the district formation. This will let people like me who so value this vital community resource to vote on more sustainable, long-term funding. So please form an intergovernmental agreement that's binding and, and take these steps to forming a library district. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Next, we have Rachel Daly, Andy Saylor, and Patty Bonet. Rachel?
Hi, my name is Rachel Daly. I'm so glad the library is getting the attention it deserves tonight. The last normal pre-pandemic outing I had before COVID shut everything down was taking my seven-year-old daughter Kate to the stuffed animal sleepover at the main branch of the Boulder Public Library. We met friends there, and all the kids had a blast singing, dancing, and reading with their stuffed animals, led by the friendly and fun librarians. The kids left their stuffies at the library for the night, and when we returned in the morning, the librarians gave my kiddo photos of her stuffy doing all kinds of fun things at the library. My daughter was absolutely tickled. We checked out a pile of books and went home, all without spending a dollar out of our own pockets. In the coming months, as we isolated at home during the pandemic, I would see that pile of books and my mind would go back to that last get-together we had with our friends at the library. Our libraries are a vital part of our Boulder community. Any parent, no matter their age, their gender, their race, or ecumenic means, can bring their children to the library to enjoy these events, to check out a book, or to use a computer. Before COVID, my older daughter, Ami, learned how to make a hat at the Boulder Public Library Maker Space with the amazing people of the Sewing Rebellion. If you look at the library calendar now in this time of COVID, the events are fewer and virtual, but the library is still managing to reach out to the community. On the calendar, you'll find opportunities for people learning English to practice their speaking and listening. You'll find musical storytime and citizenship classes and queer-themed teen book clubs. If we want Boulder to be a center for creativity, educational attainment, equitable opportunity, and technological savvy, we need enduring, accessible community spaces. I urge the council to support a library district to ensure long-term funding for our libraries. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rachel. Next, we have Andy Saylor, Patty Bonet, and Heather Ridge. Andy?
Thank you. My name is Andy Saylor, and I live in the Dakota Ridge neighborhood in North Boulder. I've long been an avid fan of Boulder's library system, from the Maker Space at the main library to the wonderful storytimes and multilingual services provided at the Nobbo Corner Library. In this age of disinformation, I cannot think of a more critical institution for the protection of our democracy than our public library system. Unfortunately, Boulder's library has long been at the bottom of the list when it comes to the city's funding priorities. The disproportionate cuts the library suffered during the COVID budget crises underlines how, when it comes to what the city is willing to pay for, the library often comes last. I'd like to ask council to take this opportunity to move forward with the formation of a library district. Providing stable, sustainable funding for our library system is critical to the long-term security and prosperity of our community. I also think this is a great opportunity for Boulder to start to move away from its overreliance on regressive sales taxes, which fall most heavily on the least affluent members of our community, in favor of more equitable property tax-based funding mechanisms. A library district funded by property taxes achieves a level of stable and equitable funding for our libraries beyond what the city can achieve under its existing funding models. I'd also like to address a common concern raised around the formation of a library district, meaning we must cede control over this valuable community asset. That is not the case. Under the proposed district model, the library will remain under the governance of those it always has, the residents and taxpayers of the regions it serves. Indeed, a district is better able to ensure that the community the library serves are represented in decisions about its operation, since the district's Board of Trustees could be drawn from a wider patron base included in the proposed district boundary. Stable funding for our library is a can we have kicked down the road for far too long. Please take the opportunity before you this evening to move forward with the formation of a library district and a community vote on its funding as soon as possible. Stop the delay, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Andy. Next, we have Patty Bonet, Heather Ridge, and Alicia Sadel. Patty?
Hi, my name is Patty Bonet, and I live in Central Boulder. When I was a little girl, my mom would take us to the library every Saturday as part of our weekly errands. The librarians knew us and would carefully help me select a new batch of books each week, which transported me to other worlds. They sparked a lifelong love of reading and learning for me that continues to this day. Today, I'm a documentary producer, and the Boulder Library has been the host of a number of my creative endeavors, including the Indigenous Your Eyes Photography Exhibit and screenings of my film Come Back to Sudan about our local Lost Boys of Sudan, and has served as a meeting space for numerous groups I'm involved with, like Right Relationship Boulder. The library has helped me use art to teach our community about our fellow citizens who normally don't get a lot of exposure or the opportunity to tell their own stories. In addition, I've attended a wealth of events there, including countless movies and concerts and events like the Jaipur Literature Festival and BIF that have made this city a much more vibrant and interesting place to live. I use the library weekly. I'm constantly checking out films and books for research in my work, and I'm extremely grateful for what this place and its people bring to my life. The library is the heart and soul of Boulder. I love that I can see so many people who I might not normally encounter in my daily life here. Kids learning to read, immigrants taking ESL classes, seniors learning how to use computers, or students writing resumes, or taking advantage of the Maker Space. Shared public spaces matter. The library matters. I'm dismayed to see the recent layoffs and cutbacks. We are a wealthy city. We can do better. We have to do better if there's any hope of saving the soul of this town. Every other library in Colorado similar to Boulder has in size and user base is now a library district. These established library districts saw little change in services due to budget cuts when the pandemic hit, while Boulder's library sustained significant job losses. Now is the time to fully fund the library. When I think about how the library helped me develop and grow as a child, it breaks my heart to think of all those in our our community who might lose their opportunity to learn and thrive due to cutbacks and loss of services.
Thank you, Patty. Next, we have Heather Ridge, Alicia Sadel, and Anna Seeger. Heather?
Thank you. My name is Heather Ridge, and my pronouns are she/her's. And I've lived in Boulder County for about twenty years in the Park East neighborhood. For the last seventeen years, I've been a science teacher for Boulder Valley School District, and I wanted to use my time tonight to bring an educator perspective about the services that our library's been able to provide for our students and their families and my fellow teachers. And I urge you to support the library district as part of an intergovernment agency to make sure that those services remain stable. As a science teacher, I have students write research papers, and now more than ever, it's really important that they're able to discern credible information. The library databases that they're able to access for free are crucial, and those are services that other schools have to pay for in order to have available to students. The space for student projects after school, getting together to study, to meet with tutors, also the incredible teen space to support social emotional learning for students. It's also a great support for families. It's more equitable. It's a place for families to come to study, to access the internet, to learn English, to learn to read. So it's a pretty critical space. As you've heard tonight, obviously, we all care very much about our library because it's many things to many people. Much like a school district, right? It's got an incredibly wide range of needs that it's trying to meet across, and it's differentiating us across a wide range of people and demographics. Imagine the council running our school. The idea of creating a library district that is solely for the purpose of these services makes a lot of sense, much like our school district, right, is governed and created independent of our city council. Asking in the current model and looking at the municipal model, we're asking them to compete for services rather than supplement. And so I urge you to vote for the library district to help expand these services to more people and to more area and create a stable funding environment so that these are services that we can count on as a community in the future as well. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much, Heather. Next, we have Alicia Sadel, Anna Seeger, and Lynn Segal. Alicia?
Hello, my name is Alicia Gibbs-Sidel, and I live downtown. First, let me say how excited I am. Public hearing is taking place. Boulder's been waiting years for this public hearing, so thank you for letting us have that. I was a library commissioner in the past and now on the Boulder Library Foundation Board as the president. I know the history of the library funding issues and shortfalls as well. I hope you have all written a letter in support of a library district through resolution, the summary of which is that we know how incredibly thin the library is stretched in funding and staff, and we know how incredibly popular the library is at the Boulder Public. The foundation continues to fund more and more as the city cuts and cuts from the library budget. This method of depending on the foundation to step in and give the taxpayers what they want is not financially sustainable. I'm also a mom in Boulder. One of the things I've missed the most throughout the pandemic is the library. My daughter has outgrown lap babies during the pandemic. And it was a cherished program for me to bring my kids to. She will never know that program, not due to budget cuts, but the pandemic. But those two things aren't that far apart. It could have easily been budget cuts prohibited the program from existing. I don't know how we'll continue to do all the foundation's programs with the staff cuts that have happened due to COVID. We used to, my family used to go there on a daily basis, and we'll go back as soon as we can to read, play, and learn. The programs are priceless to my children's education. The staff is pure gold. Our library is such a gem, it was named Library of the Year. I love paying taxes. Taxes make our society run. Please let me pay taxes for my library. We have such an amazing library here. Our library even has a Maker Space. The library is a bright, welcoming, inclusive spot for so many of our citizens. Boulder needs to fund it through a district and let the people vote. Lots of other Colorado libraries and cities have created districts successfully, and we can too. It's time to stop kicking this can down the road to a new city council, or we will never move forward with funding for our library. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Alicia. Next, we have Anna Seeger, Lynn Segal, and Nami Basan. Anna?
Hello, yes. Thank you for holding this session tonight about the library district. My name is Anna Seeger, and the Boulder Public Library has been important to my family and continues to be important. When we first moved here from El Salvador, my husband took English classes at the Boulder Public Library with Inter cambio. He later took his citizenship classes at the Boulder Public Library with volunteers from Inter cambio. And since the pandemic started, my son has had an extremely difficult time with online learning, working on a computer, just doesn't. It's not productive for him. He's very easily distracted, and he was recently diagnosed with ADHD. And his therapist said that one of the things he needs to do And his therapist said that one of the things he needs to do is be taken to the library regularly and have a steady supply of books so that he is able to do some offline focused reading. We requested a hold of some books. The librarians were very helpful and picked out some books for him and set them aside for us to go pick up. But he, since the teen section is still closed and the adult section is closed, he can't go and pick out and walk around and get books on his own. I'd like to see that change. So I think the library is definitely a central part of community life, and we need to bring back the 13 full-time jobs that were eliminated and the 50 part-time positions that had been eliminated over the past year, as well as increase the funding back to the 2019 funding levels. I heard that it's about $1.3 million that is needed to bring it back to the 2019 levels. And yet, we spent almost the exact same amount on funding more police officers and new police vehicles to deal with the homeless population. So I am asking, as the library user and city resident, that this council takes steps to begin the formation of a library district that can provide sustainable, long-term funding for our library system. It could free up millions of dollars in the city's budget by removing the need for the city to fund the library.
Thank you, Anna. Your time is up. Next, we have Lynn Segal, Nami Basin, and Miho Shida. Lynn?
I love the library. It's not a matter of how much I love the library. I probably will get to go to the library in my next life because I spend my whole life at the Planning Board, at the Water Resources Advisory Board, at the Open Space Board of Trustees, fighting CU South, fighting for people's housing value in Boulder to be equitable and for social and racial equity in this community. This is a regressive tax, whether it's sales tax or it's property tax. It's regressive because property tax goes up when the land value goes up and all of these projects in Boulder and all of these needs in Boulder. You know, and why should we have a library district extending to other counties? We send the homeless outside of our county, and then we expect them to come back and we're going to make a trade now and they can use our library? No, our services need to be met. We need to not have these things as afterthoughts. We need to have libraries in gun barrels in every community. Why should people from Gun Barrel commute to Boulder? We can transfer the books from branch to branch as people need them. It's a matter of how, not that we don't all love the library. Of course, we love the library. I wish I knew Caroline Alden, who next door testified for this project tonight because I would have talked to her, but I don't have time to talk to her because I'm at Planning Board and everything else, trying desperately to keep things affordable in this town before it becomes a town of Elon Musk next door to Elon Musk. Let the developers pay. Let the developers pay. You know, someone spoke of saving our soul. You know, our libraries are our soul. Well, so was Red Letter Books that got taken over by a condo that wanted an electric car elevator to save the space for their overpriced condos because a ramp takes up extra space. This is obscene what's going on in this town. I have watched condo after condo after development after development, get every subsidy, and the city council can't do enough to help them along. Marpa House tonight. That was obscene that you accepted that. Obscene. Marpa House was the model of affordable housing in Boulder, and yet you're scrambling to do more affordable housing, the more that you're upping the value of the land in Boulder and increasing the cost to people.
Thank you, Lynn. Your time's up. Next, we have Nami Basin, Miho Shida, and Kelly Donovan. Nami?
Hi, I'm Nami Basin. I'm here today also to voice my support of the formation of a library district. I have personal stories and I can talk about my child, but really what I want to say is that the thing about libraries that's really cool is you can have two different books with two opposing arguments sitting on the same shelf and leave it up to a reader to decide what to make of the information presented to them. You can even have two different people read the same book and take away two different things. That's because libraries are democracy in its most pure form. There is no conclusion. There's no voting. There's no end of discussion. And I think that that's sometimes why there's a feeling of being affronted when individuals in our community register complaints because they perceive impropriety, misuse, or what they feel like is overoccupation by certain individuals of library space. But just like those two books on the shelf with competing perspectives, the practice of learning to live with each other's different uses of library space is also the practice of pure democracy, and it's something that we need in our community. So I believe Boulder needs to allocate resources in such a way that it's in alignment with our core values. And if you all truly value intellectual freedom, which I believe you do, I know that you'll do more than say tender words about our library, and you will make deliberate choices to ensure that all branches reopen and are well-funded. I personally believe that the best way to do this is through the formation of a library district. Thank you.
Thank you, Nami. Next, we have Miho Shida, Kelly Donovan, and Nathan Sadel. Miho?
Hello, my name is Miho Shida, and I live at 6783 Idlewild Court in Gun Barrel. As one of the wealthiest communities in Colorado and the home to the state's flagship university, I think it makes civic sense for Boulder to have a healthy public library system. The library empowers and benefits all segments of our community, especially those with limited means. So why not create a robust library that we can all be proud of? Not one that has to cancel Prospector, the service that delivers books to residents' mailboxes during a pandemic, or is unable to open branches for lack of funding. The place that I visited the most when I was raising my two kids was the Boulder Public Library. I have no doubt that the library instilled a love of reading to them and has helped them to become the knowledge-seeking, inquisitive young adults that they are today. I can't think of a more important function that a public institution can provide for a community than this. A healthy library is an investment in the future and has the power to shape Boulder's legacy. Therefore, I urge council to support the formation of a library district. Thank you.
Thank you. Miho, next, we have Kelly Donovan, Nathan Sadel, and Claudia Team. Kelly?
Hello, my name is Kelly Donovan, and I live in unincorporated Gun Barrel. Some of my earliest memories are from going to my local library and picking out books in the children's section. Since then, I've always had a love of books and immediately got a library card when I moved to Boulder 15 years ago. Once I had children, I was excited to introduce them to the children's room at the main branch, knowing that it could create fond memories for them as it did for me. Sure enough, my kids, who are now nine, six, and six, have such a love for books and read a ton. The library is a big part of their lives. Pre-COVID, they would go for storytimes, play at the main branch, and pick out books to take home. They were disappointed with the COVID shutdown, and as we just didn't have enough books in the house to keep up with their reading. They were so excited when the library opened up again, and we could start putting books on hold, and even more excited when the children's room opened and they could go out, go there and pick up their own books. I ended up getting my oldest a library card so he could help manage their requests, but it's still me who has to drive across town to pick them up, which can be a challenge for me as a working mom and with the library's reduced hours. I'm in favor of the library district as I really want to see a Gun Barrel branch open as it would be a much-needed addition to this area. It's quite shocking that such a wealthy and progressive community like Boulder has a library that is so underfunded, especially when library districts have been set up in other towns across the state of Colorado. As a longtime library user and supporter, I am asking the city council to begin the formation of a library council district for Boulder to provide sustainable funding for our library as an investment to both the library and to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Next, we have Nathan Sadel, Claudia Team, and Henry Coran. Nathan?
Hello, my name is Nathan Sadel, and I am the founder of SparkFun Electronics, a business in Boulder County with 104 employees. We own and operate an 80,000-square-foot manufacturing facility in Gun Barrel. In 2021, we paid $304,000 in property taxes to the county. While this amount has been increasing at a staggering rate, we would love to be taxed more for a library district. In addition, I don't know any business owners in my network who would be against increasing taxes for the library. Increased funding to a library means a more educated workforce. And to me, a 2019 survey represents the will of the people. The people that love the library in 2019 want to continue to use it. Please don't waste more time and money doing nothing. Please do something. As a businessperson, looking at the predicament both the library and the city are in financially, it just makes sense to form a library district. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. Next, we have Claudia Team, Henry Coran, and Donna George. Claudia?
Good evening, members of council. My name is Claudia Hanson Theme. I live in the Holiday Neighborhood, and I'm speaking tonight in support of a library district. I think about the library the most as a parent, and my two children have known it since birth. It's a staple of family life in Boulder. It's a place where we've not only found books, lots of books, but also inspiration, Grecit, and friends, but it's so much more. When I sat down to write this comment, I started thinking about all of the other reasons I've visited the library in pre-pandemic times. And I came up with a picture of the library as a center of civic life. I've walked through to see friends and neighbors' artwork on display. I listened to Police Chief Canidets introduce themselves to the community in the Canyon Theater, and I've attended board trainings and planned Boulder candidate forums in the Boulder Creek Room. And I've even had coffee with Mayor Weaver in the Seeds Cafe, presumably because it was a neutral place to meet. Every person advocating for stable funding tonight has some version of this list, and together they weave the fabric of this community. Like many people, I was amazed when I learned that the library has maintained its high standing in the community, in fact, expanding its programming and user base despite years of stagnant funding. I did not want to believe it was that bad, but the pandemic budget crisis shows what supporters have been arguing for years. The library is the first to be cut and last to be restored when sales tax revenues decline. This is no way to treat a heart of our community. For three years now, advocates have asked you to greenlight a library district and to let them make the case to the public for funding that matches the library's reach and value in the community. This has always been a sensible ask, and with time, it's become more urgent. The Boulder Public Library deserves a stable financial future, and a district gets us there. Please support it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. Next, we have Henry Coran, Donna George, and Sarah George. Henry?
My name is Henry Coran. I live in Tbilisi. Our libraries are the milk and honey of this town. My family visits the main library every week. In normal times, we check out around 700 books a year to read to our kids. My two young girls have learned to read with the help of our library. For them, it was a pre preschool. It was their go-to for education and play long before they got, they were eligible to be students in our school district. When my kids were just one year old, they met other children who would grow to become their lifelong friends at a library storytime. Now, my girls are thriving. They have become incredible readers because of the resources the library offers. My eldest Maya has figured out what she wants to do when she grows up. She wants to be an author and illustrator. The library has made a tremendous difference in so many children's lives. The quality of our library will echo into the future as our children grow into responsible young adults who are less likely to require policing. The library is an essential resource that contributes to our community's mental health, where people can find sanity, meet others, get lost in a book, or work outside of their houses. As residents of South Boulder, my family would love to see George Reynolds Branch reopen so we can make it to library on foot instead of a 10-minute drive. Gun Barrel also deserves its own library branch. Without adequate funding, a whole generation of Boulder's children will miss out on these sorts of opportunities. This will do serious harm to our community. A small increase in property taxes dedicated to funding our libraries will be worth every penny. I encourage those who are concerned about the tax to consider the indirect long-term benefits that a fully funded library system will have in our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Henry. Next, we have Donna George pooling time with Sarah George and Mark George, which will give four minutes to Donna. I would like to confirm, Donna, that you're here, and then here, Sarah and Mark here as well.
Hi, yes. Hello, can you hear me? This is Donna George.
I can hear you, Donna. If you have Sarah and Mark, say hello.
Hi, I'm Sarah.
Hi, this is Mark George.
Perfect. Donna, you have four minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Donna George. I live in unincorporated Gun Barrel, and I strongly support a library district. The increase in taxes is worth it for me even when I am utilizing the library much less than when my daughter was younger. Libraries provide a great service to all citizens, young and old, and creates community. I see the library as an important community amenity that needs to be supported by a reliable budget from year to year and not relegated to the whims of the city budget. The library has been neglected over the years. It is usually one of the very last items to consider in the budget and gets whatever money is left over. The creation of a library district would mean that the library would have its own budget funded by the district. I see the creation of a library district as having a great library system supported by the citizens within the district. I strongly believe that the Board of Directors of the newly created library district should include representatives from unincorporated areas like Niwata and Gun Barrel, the mountain communities, and not just from the city of Boulder. In the future, the independent libraries of Longmont, Louisville, and Lafayette may want to join in the district, further spreading the cost and providing for more efficiency in the cost of purchases and services. This could reduce the task cost to all citizens and benefit all the libraries. Longmont, I hear, is looking at doing its own library district for its library, and maybe Boulder should talk to them and see if you can combine their library district with Boulder's library district. I have used the Longmont Library in addition to the Boulder, the Lafayette, and the Louisville Libraries. So I think that a library district that's actually county-wide would be fantastic. 200 to 300 more a year in property taxes is worth it for me for a great investment in important library services for the Boulder County community. You know, I've been going on, recently I had $200 a month in my Comcast bill. That was just a month, which was internet, phone, and TV, and I had to try to lower that, as we all know how that goes. So to me, an investment in my community for $200, $300 a year is a strong investment, and a library is important for the community. The Gun Barrel branch should be located in the Gun Barrel Community Center plant area, close to the grocery store, the post office, et cetera. Today, I just saw spaces for rent in some commercial buildings across from King Supers, or it could be in the area of shops next to King Supers. I also want to note that when my daughter was young, she took piano lessons next to the Meadows branch. That was the branch that we mainly went to. And when we went to that, it was a weekly thing. We'd go to piano lessons, and after piano lessons, she'd go to the library and, you know, take out more books and return the books that, you know, she had taken out before. And we also went to the cafe by there, or we went to the grocery store. It was like a combined trip, and that's what I believe Gun Barrel should be. And it's important to support libraries. So I hope that all you on council will vote to start work on a library district because I think it is the smart and the best way to go for funding for the library. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Donna. Next, we have Juana Gomez, Jeff Kahoon, and Michael Green. Juana?
Hello, I'm Juana Gomez at 1127 Crenbrook Court in Boulder. Thank you for your attention to library funding tonight at this public hearing. I am a strong advocate for our public library and for stabilizing its budget. Lately, our national discussion has been focused on infrastructure, on expanding our understanding of that term, and on paying for all that we take for granted as a basic platform for our lives. Just as we take care that our bridges and traffic lights continue Just as we take care that our bridges and traffic lights continue to perform and allow for transportation through town, we need to take care of our city's living room, our engine for innovation, the public library. We wouldn't think of building housing without providing it with water and sanitation. Likewise, we wouldn't think of building neighborhoods and towns without public libraries. A library district is the most reliable funding model and the most equitable. Forming a group to draft an IGA for a library district will be a step in the right direction. But in fact, forming a district by resolution would be two steps in the right direction. An IGA will help us arm ourselves with facts. Without it, answers to questions about the details of a library district remain murky. This is our chance to think global and act local in ways that can have tangible impact and leave a legacy for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Juana. Next, we have Jeff Kahoon, Michael Green, and Caitlin McQuade. Jeff?
A reminder that as you're, oh, looks like you're.
Thank you, Sam. Mayor Weaver, City Council, can you hear me?
You're good to go, yep.
Thank you. This is Jeff Kahoon. I'm a resident of Boulder, living at 1420 Elder Avenue. And I'm president of the Boulder Area Labor Council. And I want to comment from a working family's perspective. The the effect of a library district is substantial. For one thing, I will confess, the Boulder Area Labor Council has been meeting for years and years in the very nice conference room and basement of George Reynolds Library. And with Zoom, et cetera, we have not been meeting there. We would like to return to our own. I'll tell you that much. And the George Reynolds Library and their staff has been very kind to us over the years. That's, it must be recognized that we need our libraries, and I must endorse the prior two speakers in their regard. One, yes, Boulder should explore creative alternatives to really tie into the excellent library systems in Longmont, Lafayette, Lewisville. Superior, not so much. I mean, you know, we have gaps we should fill. And an independent district can do that. And I think that's why the Labor Council definitely wants to support the idea of a library district and open up our libraries and fund them properly. With that, I'll close.
Thank you, Jeff. Next up, Michael Green, Caitlin McQuade, and Stephen Frost. Michael?
Hello, this is Michael Green. I'm at 19th and Canyon. And first, I just want to thank you council members for all your hard work. This is my first time joining the Zoom marathon, and I'm blown away that you do this every week. So thank you so much. And I want to say that I'm strongly in favor of a library district as a way to create more sustainable funding for the library and to expand its services to more people in the area. Although I do deeply value all the benefits the other speakers have highlighted, I want to highlight the value the library services have brought to my small business. I've used the Building 61 Makerspace to do a variety of things for my business that would otherwise not be possible. From cutting 10,000 straws on the laser cutter for use of my product to prototyping new packaging designs with the same laser cutter, the library has provided me with immense value, and I know from my interaction with other folks in the Makerspace that it has provided immense value for them and their businesses as well. So with that, I request that you please support the library district so we can increase access to these wonderful programs and help other small businesses access the world-class tools that they would otherwise be able to access.
Thank you, Michael. Next, we have Caitlin McQuade, Stephen Frost, and Kristen Eller. Caitlin?
Hi, also a first-time caller here. I'm a South Boulder resident and a regular contributor to the Library Foundation. I have a whole list of things that I love about the library that I do there. But you've gotten a pretty complete catalog of that, so I'm just going to skip to the thing that is the most, the best thing about the library for me, which is there is not a single place in Boulder where I have felt a greater sense of belonging to a diverse community. There's every kind of people there. It's a great feeling, and I'm grateful for it every time I visit. I'm here, first of all, to thank you. You are looking at two options for providing greater and more stable funding to our library. It's clear that you recognize the library's value to our community. Secondly, I want to let you know that I support the creation of a library district over the option where the city maintains control. From what I can tell, the library district option would bring in more money. It would expand the number of people who are contributing to the library's needs, many of whom are currently getting its services for free. And it would create a governing body focused solely on the library's financial health and on its fulfillment of the community's needs. It also seems like the library district option would free up more money in the city's budget than the other option and relieve city government of the responsibility and headaches of managing the library. As an institution, the heart of a library beats in service to a free and civil society, a society whose citizens have access to resources that improve their minds and their lives. Please do the most you can to provide Boulder with the best possible library, even if it means letting someone else take control. Thanks.
Thank you, Caitlin. Next, we have Stephen Frost, Kristen Eller, and Lila Hickey. Stephen?
Good evening, Mayor Weaver, members of the City Council. My name is Stephen Frost. I'm a resident in the Holiday Neighborhood in Nobo. I'm faculty at CU Boulder. I'm also vice chair of the Library Commission and founder of the Colorado Sowing Moralean, which is of course hosted in the library's Makerspace. I want to thank everybody who's taken time out of their evening to advocate for the library tonight. Thank you all so much. I'm here tonight to join them and to speak to the need for sustainable funding for our public library system. Library advocates and city commissioners have made this request to the council for years. And now is the time to form a library district. As all of you know, sales tax revenue has fallen dramatically due to COVID-19, and huge cuts have been made to keep our city in the black. And while the library accounts for less than 4% of the overall city budget, it sustained 20% of the cuts that were made citywide. Of course, our library staff may do within budgets and less staff, but still hours were cut, programs had to be shelved, and professional staff were fired. Senior positions were vacated but not replaced. And now the library does not have enough funding to return to normal operating hours at all of its branches. Highly qualified staff members with international reputations for their research and scholarship have been, have left and have left and were forced to move on to new opportunities in other cities. We won't get these people back. The thousands of dollars spent on recruitment, training, and development, it's all been lost. It is easy to blame the decimation of our libraries on COVID-19, but the reality is that these losses are the result of our current funding mechanism. Throughout Colorado's nearly 60 existing library districts, you will find that many of them, actually, most of them, are fully open, well-staffed, and operating at near pandemic levels. Why hasn't the city formed a library district by resolution? Most members of the council value the cultural, social, and economic, civil contributions of our library. And I ask you tonight to form a library district by resolutions that we can begin the work of bringing our library up to sustainable levels of funding. Thank you all.
Thank you, Stephen. Next, we have Kristen Eller, Lila Hickey, and Eric Budd. Kristen?
Hi, council. My name's Kristen Eller, and I'm a resident of Gunbarrow. And I'm someone who loves libraries, and I specifically love Boulder library system. I volunteer at the Boulder Public Library, and I know we've heard from pretty much everyone that's spoken about how important libraries are. But I really don't think we can get enough of that, so I'm going to tell you a little more. As a child, I moved constantly. And do you know something we did every single time we moved somewhere? The first thing we did is we went to the library. We went to the library, we got our library card, and before all the boxes were unpacked at our house, before we had internet, we went to the library, we got internet access, and we read books. And that is a critical part of my childhood, and it's still a part of my life today. And libraries are an investment in our community, and they're an investment into the people of Boulder and enriches our city. Our libraries have been underfunded for decades. And this council, not next council, this council, has the power to change that for the future children of Boulder, residents of Boulder, and the community of Boulder. Three years ago in 2018, the Library Commission recommended forming a library district. And I support this, as you've heard many other people support this, and I hope you all support this. The formation of a library district can provide sustainable, long-term funding for our library system that will only enrich our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kristen. Next, we have Lila Hickey, Eric Budd. And then we move on into new folks with Jane Wilson. So, Lila?
Hello. Good evening, council and staff. My name is Lila Hickey. I'm a resident of North Boulder, and I'm here to speak in favor of creating a library district. When I moved to Boulder in the spring of 2019, one of the first things I did was get a library card. Why? Because if you want to know the heart of a town, you go to its library. For libraries, as those who frequent them know, are about so much more than books. They're about eBooks and internet access, access to professional librarians to help jumpstart a student's research project or help a retiree begin mapping their family genealogy. They are a safe space for people who don't have a safe space, or just a space for your meetup. Boulder's main library delighted me. It's a place with so much promise. But I was shocked and surprised to hear that Boulder has no library district. Coming from Fort Collins, where voters created a library district more than a decade ago, I have seen firsthand the benefits of stable funding proportionate to the growth and success of the community. The Fort Collins Library District is thriving, even in this pandemic. Boulder's library is not. Others have already quoted some of the budget reductions. I was deeply dismayed to hear we now have 30% less staff than we did almost two decades ago, in 2002. A library district will allow the Boulder community to directly and consistently support this precious public resource and ensure it grows in step with Boulder. I urge council to support a library district by resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Lila. Next, we have Eric Budd, Jane Wilson, and Mitchell Garcia-Morrissey. Eric?
Hello, Eric Budd. I live in South Boulder, a place where our library is currently closed. So many of the speakers tonight have really talked about the importance of the library and its services. I wanted to talk about how important it is as a public space in our community. Libraries are a place that drive equity in our community. They are a place that we fund, that anyone can go, anyone can learn, anyone can use the resources, especially people that don't have them. And I think one of the reasons I really support the regional district is because we see how we provided this service in Boulder, and that service really extends out into the county beyond the city limits. And it absolutely makes sense to provide a dedicated funding resource for, not just Boulder, but the greater community as well. And that dedicated funding is incredibly important. So many people have said during the pandemic that we have essentially lost our funding because of cuts to the city budgets, which could have been avoided with a funding mechanism like this. And it's just, it's a travesty to me that in this time where our budget has become under such pressure that without this dedicated funding, we've essentially got a decision from you all to increase funding for the police force, several million dollars to enforce on homeless people, people experiencing homelessness, while our libraries remain closed, while people can't get access to those services. And that's why we need this kind of dedicated funding for what is a public space for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Next, we have Jane Wilson, who's already spoken to us on this, Mitchell Garcia-Morrissey, and Rachel Daly. Jane?
Hi, I'm Jane Sykes Wilson, Maxwell Avenue. I've already spoken to you today, so I'm not going to repeat what I had to say. I just had one comment to add. Before this public comment, there was a discussion about creating a committee to research and find out what the community would like, whether they'd like a library district or not. My only comment is to that is that I am a library commissioner, and I'm sitting on the third library commission that has recommended this to the council. So in the discussion of creating more research around this and reaching out to more communities, I'd really ask you to look to the last three library commissions who have recommended this, who have looked deeply into the funding, looked at the issues, and have recommended to city council that we move forward with a library district. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Next, we have Michelle Garcia-Morrissey, and then Rachel Daly and Claire Kelly. I believe Rachel Daly has spoken to us already, but we'll start with Michelle.
Michelle is not present. I recommend we move to Claire Kelly.
Okay, sounds good.
Hi, my name is Claire Kelly, and I live in Boulder on the corner of Mapleton and Folsom. And this is my first to the city. It's really wonderful to be here, and thanks so much for all the work you do. I am here to support the creation of a library district. I'm the mother of two young children, and we love setting storytime with Boulder librarians Melanie and Alice. Read with Us, which has been recorded online, then Saber, about the pandemic. And I work in book publishing, so I know how essential libraries are for reader discovery. And I'm a master of library and information science student. And so I have an awe and appreciation for the powerful role that our library plays in this community's social infrastructure. I'm also fascinated by the idea of the model of a library district on local news, which is something Longmont explored. I'm also a home delivery volunteer at the Boulder Public Library, and I see how elderly patrons really benefit from the books, and she checks out each month. And I'm an enthusiastic library patron myself. One of the first things I did when I moved here was to get a library card. But so I was sad when library funding was cut when the pandemic hit and when librarians were laid off. And I was also disappointed that as a result of the funding cut, I was no longer able to use interlibrary loan because that service was cut at the Boulder Public Library. So I went, I packed my kids in the car, and I went to Golden Library to get a library card access to Pike's Peak's library district so I could have access to Prospector and request books for my grad school research there. So I just want to say, as others have said, a library district is a tried and true method of sustainably funding in Colorado. From Pueblo to Fort Collins, Colorado Springs, Mrs. Park, they've decided that the district is the best way to govern, fund their library. Could Boulder please do it too? Thanks.
Thank you, Claire. Next, we have Sharon Procopio and Alicia Murray. Sharon?
Hello, all. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, everyone. Sharon Procopio, 4954 10th Street here in Boulder. I often attend these meetings wearing my design hat as a civil engineer for various projects. And in full transparency, I've had the pleasure to work with staff on the library. The North Boulder Library is a civil engineer on the site project. And I'm proud of the design team for including really all the stakeholders that worked to get it approved for construction. But today, I'm here as a citizen of Boulder for the past 15 years and a homeowner here in North Boulder in the Dakota Ridge neighborhood, and a mom of an eight-year-old who loves the library almost as much as I do. He's still sitting here next to me reading because he wanted to wait for me to finish this to put him to bed. He loves choosing library books. He loves the playground at the civic area. He took part in the library's winter reading challenge. And we followed the many COVID-friendly online events and spent the past year missing our favorite librarians and our Makerspace. And we look forward to their return. And while the capital funds for the new library can And while the capital funds for the new library construction in our neighborhood are approved, without the library district, the staffing and resources to actually operate that and other libraries may not be available. We funded the structures, but not the social infrastructure that funding the library district would help secure for the longer term. And that's really important, I think, to reflect on. The libraries are a key pillar in our community and we need to fund them if we want to help our unhoused, our kids, our lower and middle-income families and all the other varieties of citizens we have in between. If we want us all to flourish rather than to flail here in Boulder. So as a library user and supporter, I strongly encourage council to take action now on the formation of a library district that can provide sustainable, long-term funding for our system. You've heard it from others and I'm here to just add on and say that I wish you all a speedy deliberation. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Next, we have Alicia Murray and it looks like Riley Mancuso has shown up. So we'll start with Alicia and then go to Riley.
Okay, I think I am second to last. This is Alicia Murray. Nice to see you. You can't see me, but I had interviewed you with, for library commission. It's a shame. I actually had props for you all, but you can't see me, so I might have to describe that a little bit later. I, at this point, I imagine your brain's a little bit mushy, so I actually encouraged you to go and listen, or sorry, go to your email. And you can find an email from me, aliciamurray@gmail.com. And I actually sent my thoughts on this last month when I thought this meeting was happening. So obviously, many, many things have, most things have been covered in this public comment. I did want to speak on one thing and it's that many, many moms have spoken. Interesting, mostly moms, right? I don't know how many dads spoke. But clearly, I think most of us agree that early childhood education pays dividends for the long term. And so, you know, that's one thing that a library does. But the other community that a library really serves, that I see, I'm a librarian, I'm a substitute librarian in Boulder Public Library, is more marginalized communities, immigrants, people who don't have internet. And you probably didn't hear from those people because they either didn't have internet access or they didn't feel comfortable speaking. So I just want you to think about all of those people. As, you know, I think David Farnan has the best, you know, really the best quote, that libraries are the last great unbroken promise of a democratic society. You know, and this year, because of COVID, we're, we're not doing that. It's definitely not equitable service. It's extremely limited service. And you have to work very hard to access services this year. I did want to point out one other thing. Oh, eighteen seconds. Okay. Fifty thousand dollars for a, for another, another survey. Please don't do that. I, I can't stand the thought of that. I want you to not only form the district, I want you to campaign for this ballot, ballot measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. And our final speaker is Riley Mancuso.
Hey, council. So yeah, I mean, like, you know, so many people have spoken out tonight in support of libraries. You know, libraries are a universal public good. Librarians are the best people on earth. And if you give them more money, they know how to spend it for the good of the community. A library district is kind of a no-brainer, as people have pointed out. Lots of cities in Colorado, lots of regions in Colorado have them and have been using them very successfully. I also don't really understand why the city of Boulder would not want to make more people outside of the city pay for stuff. Like, that just seems like a no-brainer win-win for me, you know? You love saying like that these like thirty percent of library users who aren't in the city are like mooches or whatever. So like, you know, bring them in. Create a library district. And yeah, I mean, you know, it's been a long night. Libraries are good. Create a library district. Makes sense. Solidarity with our sister city, Nadles Palestine, resisting the Israeli occupation. Support BDS, boycott Israel, peace.
Thank you, Riley. And with that, we will bring the public hearing to a close and bring this back to council. So council, questions, comments, suggestions, next steps. You're up. Rachel.
All right, I'll kick us off here. So my feeling is that this council does not agree on everything, but I think that we are really good at not kicking cans down the road. So that is what I would ask us to stay true to tonight. This particular issue has really dragged on. And while we cannot control that COVID happened, we can help to make up for lost time by voting to form a district by resolution tonight. I agree with the speakers who've touted the benefits of libraries and I will not belabor their points, except to share that I have spent a ton of time in libraries as well. And I especially appreciate that people who are most in need can get their needs met at libraries. From de facto shelters to free toddler activities, libraries are amazing. And I firmly believe in supporting libraries as a provider of crucial social infrastructure. I also have the sense that most of us probably love and want to support libraries, just like I do. And I don't know if I differ on this or not, but based on my lifetime of encounters in libraries where I have always felt safe and supported and kind of free to like whatever I like and not judged and where I always get good advice. I just deeply trust library folks. They are telling us that forming a district by resolution is the best thing that we can do for libraries. And I'm just going to trust them on that. And so I would say, let's vote to form the district by resolution and get moving on the IGA and let voters decide. And in any event, let us not kick the can down the road to a future council or eat up more council staff and community time looking again at this threshold issue. Thanks.
May I ask you a question clarifying, Rachel?
You may.
Staff doesn't suggest that we create a district by resolution tonight. Are you suggesting we do something different than staff has recommended?
Yeah. I, I think that David Geer answered that, that all of them maybe were looking at, at the supposition of forming a district by resolution. And I think that's been a threshold issue that we keep coming back to on this council. And if we sidestep it, I, I just fear that we will have to revisit it. So yeah, that's what I'm asking us to do is to form a district by resolution. And my preference would be to get it done by the October timeline so that the next council doesn't have to get up to speed and we have another, you know, year of studies and more information getting outdated. So yeah, that's what I'm asking for. Thanks.
If I might add, I think one thing that would be helpful for staff is in Attachment C, there's a couple of work plans related to library district formation. You know, and I talked about it a little bit earlier in my presentation, that there's one that starts it sooner, one that starts it later, and then we also proposed a municipal option. So to the extent that you could give us some guidance on, on our work plan or on a work plan, that would be appreciated.
Thank you, David. Erin and then Mirby.
Yeah, and I agree with everything that Rachel said. And we, we all know what wonderful things libraries are and what a great equalizer they are in terms of providing access to to knowledge for everyone. And so many people in public testimony spoke eloquently about that. So I won't, I won't attempt to repeat all of those marvelous sentiments. But I think it's, it's really compelling that the experts in this area are all telling us that a district is the right way to go. So our current library commission, the last library commission, the commission before that have all endorsed this unanimously as the best way forward for our library system. And it's in, written into our library master plan, their recommendation as well. Also, the very hardworking folks in the Boulder Library Foundation, who've been supplying enormous amounts of critical funds to the library for many years and have stepped up enormously in the last year during the pandemic as well. Also unanimously recommend a library district. And one hundred percent of our speakers tonight were in favor and in, with many inspiring words from folks from the, the local area labor council and to local residents to people in incorporated Boulder County. I, I thought it was quite inspiring to hear from a number of people outside the city who are users of the library that are not currently taxed and who are saying, form a district and add our taxes, please, to the tax base of the district. I thought that was really impressive. So I, I do think it's the, the best track forward for sustainable funding for the library. I hope we move forward on it expeditiously. It is a well-worn pathway. There are many library districts in the state. And Fort Collins most recently did an almost identical move ten years ago and it's been extremely successful. So I agree with Rachel about not kicking the can down the road. And, you know, to David's point, let's do that, that quicker timeframe, you know, to, to move forward. You know, somebody referenced the question about binding the future council. You know, future council, if they really felt compelled to, could always undo something if they, if a majority felt like they really had to. But I think we can go ahead and move forward on our own without doing anything improper. So I, I hope we'll take a good first step tonight. Thanks.
And Sharon, Mirby, and then Adam. Mirby?
Mine was just a question. Does staff have a page they could put up in terms of what they want answered from council? Sorry, I didn't know if there was a slide for that. It'd just be helpful to see it for a moment.
Whoever's running the presentation, put up the motion slide. I think it's around eleven or twelve. Thank you. And just to put a little extra on this. You know, with the library district motion, we, we didn't specify, frankly, we wanted to hear from the council in terms of which approach you wanted to take. But we do have two different options that, as I described just a few minutes ago. One that would have the council taking action this fall and one that would, a work plan that would have council taking action next summer.
Mirby, did that answer your question?
Yeah, so I just, I don't see.
So, so under the second one, library district governance and funding, there are two options, one of which has a district formed in October, one of which has a district formed in summer of 2022. So there's two options shown, but the second one has two different versions.
No option then to vote, put it to a vote about the library district. The only vote that would go on the ballot is for the municipal governance and funding, am I understanding that correctly?
Well, actually, eventually they both go to the ballot. The municipal funding option is just, would be just basically a taper and the necessary charter amendments that you would need to do a municipal funding option. With the library district, the way the, the process would work is the council would pass, the council and the county commissioners would pass a res, pass resolutions forming the district. As part of that, you would appoint a board of directors that would operate the library district or that would basically be the governing body for the library district. So that now you've got a government. We would negotiate the transitional IGA. And then after the, you know, once we had that part done, then the library district would put ballot measure on to raise a property tax, a taper measure. And, and that's how the voters would vote if you were going the resolution route.
And so just, sorry, this is, I just want to make sure we're getting this right. So is there a reason we can't put it to the ballot first to even find out if the community, I understand that we just had a ton of people sounding like they were for it, but I just, I've heard so much against it too, that before we go do all of that work, there's not just a way to put it on the ballot to find out if we even want to create the governance?
Well, at our, at, when we all got together in February to talk about the library district, I think we went through that, you know, there's two approaches. One, the, the residents within the district can circulate a petition and then ask the county commissioners to put it on, to put the question of whether to form a district on the ballot. And I think that David Farnan earlier was talking about the fact that the Boulder Library Champions, in fact, created and circulated such a petition. And then rather than, you know, basically go through and, and have an election, they worked with the city manager and, you know, various council members to say, hey, let's have a, let's, rather than push this onto the ballot, let's have a more broad, encompassing conversation about how library services should be governed and funded. So that's where we are right now. I think in February, what I took away from the council's discussion was I heard you guys say, we don't want to talk about petitioning anymore. We want to talk about either doing it by resolution and then the subsequent paper election or a municipal funding option. And that's what we're here tonight.
Okay. Thanks, David. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Adam?
Thanks, David. One of the pushbacks I've heard is, you know, that we're giving up the library as an institution. Is there any sort of way, even if we're forming a library district, that we can maintain the library as a city? You know, just the property itself owned by the city and rent it for like a dollar a year or something along those lines? Is that a possibility still?
Yeah, sure. I mean, you know, and that'll be something that, that will be the transition of, of what will be negotiated. But it could be a long-term lease arrangement. It could be a sale. It could be just a gift to the district once they have a revenue source. And from, you know, kind of the, my understanding of what I've learned from reading about library district formation, in almost every instance, when the district is formed, the municipality either gives the assets to the library district or they do some type of long-term, you know, lease with nominal consideration. And I believe Kim Seder is, is on the call. He's, he's a much better expert on this than I am. But I believe that there was one instance where the library district or the city actually sold its assets at more of a fair market value.
Yeah, that's all the information. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that route is still an option if we were to go the district route.
Yeah, just follow up on Adam's, good question. So I just want to make sure that, I know we've been through this a bunch of times, but it's, this is complicated stuff. You've council formed a district at some point in time. The trustees are appointed and the city and the trustees negotiate an IGA. What, what? What happens if they don't reach agreement? So let's say, you know, per Adam's point, there's a sticking point on value of assets or some, some other detail. What, what? What, what, what happens if there's not a meeting of the minds?
Well, I would ask Kim Seder to turn his micro, or his microphone and his camera on right now. But from what, from what I understand, just to start with, you know, there's a ninety-day timeframe in the statute to actually negotiate this. I don't think, you know, what the formations that I've looked at, I don't know that anybody's made that timeline. So that, that often gets extended and, and they work a deal. And Kim, do you have some thoughts that you would like to add to the conversation?
No, I think to directly answer Councilman Yates' question, the assets belong to the city. If there's no agreement, the assets stay with the city and the district has nothing.
Okay, thanks, Kim. And that's kind of a follow-up question for either one of you. I think we've talked before about the, the ultimate question, of course, is the tax question. And so this goes to the voters on a tax, taper tax question. And so this goes to the voters on a tax taper tax question next year or at some point in the future. And if if it, if it passes, obviously, then they're off and running. If it fails, um I think you've told us that some, some district formations have said, okay, well, you get two goes at it or three goes at it. Where is that? Um where is that embedded, that kind of, how many times uh they can ask for tax? And then what happens? Is there a kind of a self-destruct? And that is in the ordinance that forms the district, is there a provision that says, and if it doesn't pass, uh get it funding by twenty twenty-five, it automatically uh dissolves or once the district's formed, it exists forever and 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 council no longer has jurisdiction over it. E- even though there, there's no money and there's no transfer of assets.
And uh you're exactly right, that your formation resolution is where that's a condition of the existence of the district. And I believe uh Mr. Gare and and the, and the um city's lawyers have drafted in the sample um that there's several attempts at getting funding through twenty twenty-four. Of course, they're just, they're just pulling numbers out of the hat at this point, because it's up to you to decide. Uh if there's no funding at that point, the district automatically dissolves.
Great. Thanks, Kim. That was it.
Mark.
I appreciate all of the speakers tonight. Um I I want to point out that I'm not sure there's anybody who's against libraries. Um or who doesn't value our libraries as a cherished community asset and, you know, almost beyond price in terms of their value to us. But to me, that's not the only issue. Timing is an issue for me. Um I would not want to see the ballot measure uh the table ballot measure uh coming on this fall. Um I think we have a heavy enough lift in terms of the prospective community culture and safety tax renewal. And I think that's, that's a critical measure for this, for this city in terms of of other infrastructure needs that are not being met uh to the tune of about three hundred million at this point. Um so I really don't want to do them both at one time. In terms of the actual agreements, the IGA itself, I I still think there are a number of questions that need to be answered and and negotiated, and I'm concerned about those. Uh A, do we convey assets, which I would not be in favor of, um at least the the buildings? Um do we lease them? Do we lease them for a dollar a year? If the district is raising twenty million dollars, um is there a good argument for not paying a fair market value on the rental? Um or if there is, let's understand what that is. I'm a little concerned. Did I correctly read the the memo, David, that um if we move forward quickly this year, that um a couple of city departments would have to actually outsource the work that they're going to do um to stand this up?
Well, I would, so from this, from the perspective of the city attorney's office, um we stand ready to implement whatever direction we get from the council. Now, um speaking for finance and um the library, I would, I would just ask them to pipe up in terms of what their own work plans are for the remainder of the year.
Yeah. We 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 stand ready as well uh to do whatever council issues.
Um can somebody from finance chime in?
Hi, sorry, this is Kara Skinner. Um we would just be challenged if it really began straight away in June through the fall. Um and that's why we said if it did, we would probably have to contract with someone to help us meet some of the needs because of the timing with the annual budget process and um staffing realities of of the staff that we have right now.
Can you, can you give me an order of magnitude? Is it one person consulting for five thousand dollars or is it a significant outlet?
Um, we're not exactly sure right now. You know, I think we'd have to probably talk with possibly Kim Cedar, who's on this call. He's done this um for a number of districts of what type of support is out there and and what the price tag might be. Um I think HR would be similarly um challenged and might need some. And I think they do think they would need some assistance of to work on um what the input that they would need to provide into the IGA committee with regard to the transition of employees.
All right, so I I would have some.
So we would, I I guess I I I don't know if it would be ten thousand, five thousand, ten thousand, twenty thousand. We haven't really explored it and I I think we, we just don't have a good feel for what the time commitment would be.
You know, that's, that's an area of of some concern. In a financially strapped moment in history. If it's de minimis, you know, that concern goes away. If it's substantial, um I would have a little more concern about. You know, I I I understand the impatience with this. One speaker basically said, just do it. And that's a great sports slogan, but I'm not sure it's a a a good methodology for governance. And I would want to be a little more measured than sort of just doing it. So I'd like to know what's going to be involved in terms of extra expenses. I'd like to get some resolution on some of these questions and issues and not get a better feel for exactly what it is we're proving. And having said that, I'm I'm still ultimately, you know, prepared to have this go in front of the uh voters of Boulder and that they will decide whether they wish to tax themselves for the library. They very well might. Possible they won't, but that's a decision of the electorate and I'm happy to to get it in front of them. I'm just a little concerned about the timing and the expense.
Thank you, Mark. And Kim, would you like to weigh in and let us know how much it costs for our finance department?
Yes, um in the beginning, there really isn't a lot of cost because the IGA is mostly conceptual. Um dealing with how a transition would take place once the funding is approved. And then that allows you to have something that you can campaign on because you've got it pinned down. Where the real cost for the city would come in would be later when you're going to need legal work to transition assets and employees and all of those things. But that wouldn't be until after there's a successful election.
So, Kim, if I could colloquy on that, which successful election? Do you mean the tax election?
Yes.
Right, but wouldn't we need to have a plan um for that transition? Because as I look at the option A or option B, there's a para piece of this, the Public Employee Retirement Association. So wouldn't some of these financial and personnel items need to be known before the taper vote?
Yes, in a conceptual way, though. So what it would say about the employees is that the library district is going to hire, that the city's going to let all the library employees go. The district is going to hire them. You already know what the cost of that is in terms of what the district needs to know. And it will take over and utilize para. Um and you already know what that cost is. So on the district side, they know what the expenses are. On your side, you know what you're moving away from your um your finances.
Could you explain why it usually takes more than ninety days to get an IGA worked out after a resolution is passed? If 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 it's as simple as you describe, I would think the IGA part would be like a cookie cutter piece.
Yep. Um it usually takes longer because you've got, you take some time to inventory all the different assets. Inventory the employees and include that in the IGA, a list of exactly what you're dealing with. And mostly that's so that you, as the city council, know what you're transitioning so that you can determine how you want to do it. Is it a dollar a year? Is it a fair market value? Is it a sale? And so there's a lot of, not a lot, there's some back and forth to you uh while you determine what the city can and is willing to do to support the library. And it, that just takes time. So three months is not a lot of time considering the back and forth that takes place.
And then.
In the IGA, it's not very difficult. In fact, the the one that's in your packet is pretty comprehensive already. It's based upon ones we've done in the past several times.
And and then, um I've lost my thought. We got two more folks, Rachel and then Aaron.
Um, just a couple of thoughts on the, you know, dollars and cents of forming this and getting to an agreement. It seems that we always hear that staff time is kind of stretched thin, so I I wonder, might there be outsourcing regardless of what months we we choose to do this? Um like I know, a- and it's sort of routine with the um city attorney's office. We're already planning at the subcommittee level at least for discussing that there will be some outsourcing just due to to um people coming and going. So I guess I don't, I don't know that that's a huge deal and I would um welcome feedback from staff on like, i- is that abnormal? Is that a huge concern? Is it possible that if you got to this in January of uh twenty twenty-two, you'd still need some extra help? And then also would note that um time is also staff money. So if we decide to revisit this again and slow it down and have three more meetings like tonight's, that's also eating staff time and that does cost our organization real dollars and it costs, again, the community, staff and us all a lot of time.
Aaron and then Mary. Aaron?
Yeah, um I just wanted, uh Mark, if you don't mind, just offer a couple of follow-up thoughts um to to your points. I I think one of the, you know, the, I think all the options in front of us involve a taper vote in twenty twenty-two. I think I heard pretty clearly from staff in the memo that that we could start the overall process earlier rather than later, but that we would still need to wait until twenty twenty-two to put a a vote to the people. So David, right, I mean, that's all all our options include twenty twenty-two voted the soonest. Is that right?
That's correct.
Yes, Aaron, you're right, and I thank you for for the clarification.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. So so yeah, so starting earlier doesn't mean a twenty twenty-one vote for for taxes anyway. So um we can start earlier on on that side. And and just that, I agree that there there are a lot of details that need to be worked out and that would be what the IGA process, development process would would hammer out, right? There'd be a a subcommittee that would work that through and then it would be, you know, subject to approval of councils as a whole. So uh you totally agree, we have to work this through, but the the process incorporates time for that. And if we started earlier, then we have more time to work through the details and make sure we get them right and we get the support council. So a couple of thoughts there.
Um Mary, your hand is down. Did you have something you wanted? Okay. All right, well, I'll just weigh in here briefly. Um I do want to proceed with um the district pathway. I am more inclined to go with option B than option A. Um when I look at what this council needs to complete, we not only have our normal budget cycle, which will be especially difficult this year because of the recovery from COVID and the uncertainty about our projections, what kind of recovery we're going to have. So we have the budget remaining in front of us. Um and all the discussions we might have around policing and homelessness that would go with that. Then we have the um funds that we've got from the American Rescue Plan Act that are coming in, that we are just beginning to start to wrap our heads around what to do. There's CU South. If we intend to move forward with that, that's going to take a lot of council time, a lot of staff time and a lot of outreach. And when I look at two of the three of these, um and potentially the third, those all heavily involve finance staff. So I'm prepared tonight to move ahead with the um district formation pathway, but I'm inclined to use option B um that staff has proposed. I further think that that gives us the time and the space to do a good job rather than trying to rush for an October deadline, which is an odd time to be doing it. One of the last actions this council would take would be to form a district that this council will then not weigh in on, at least not um the folks who aren't running again or re-elected. So I'm not quite sure why we would try and create a fire drill to do this in this year, when in fact, the vote won't be till twenty twenty-two anyway. So if we've accepted that the vote won't be till twenty twenty-two, I cannot imagine why we would kick this whole process off in this year. I'd also say that the community culture, safety tax, we're going to need to tee that up. That will also have finance folks in it. It will take a significant amount of council time to set that up and and move it forward and campaign for it if that's what we choose to do. So when I look at everything, I think staff has given us quite a good option here, which is option B. Um and we would give certainty that that's the pathway that we are directing staff to prepare for. So um I am prepared personally to support the district formation pathway, but on the option B recommendation by staff. Uh with that, let me see, I think it's Mark and then Mirby. Mark?
Yeah, I would also be prepared to move down the path towards a district. Um there seems to be a lot of support for it and I do want to put it in front of the electorate at an appropriate moment to uh get their determination. But I would also choose option B in terms of timing.
Thank you, Mark. Mirby?
I just want to be clear one more time and again, maybe for me or maybe for people who are watching. So let's say we went with the and this is for staff, I guess. The government body would be formed. They would work out all of the information and then it would, would it come to council first or would it just go directly to the voters and the voters could then vote it up or down?
It would go to the council first. So the first step would be that you would well, first, the main advantage of option B, if there's an advantage there, is that there would be more upfront community engagement before you took action on the resolution. So it just give, it would give us the more time to do that. So hopefully, we would kind of finish up the community conversation about kind of where everybody's landing in terms of the district. In the summertime of twenty-two, you would pass the resolution. Hopefully, and we would probably have a pretty good plan already kind of laid out. And thereafter, we would we would, it is part of, as part, after the resolution, we would do the IGA uh or appoint the board of directors and do, and then do the IGA. And that would set the basis for the taper election in the fall of twenty-two.
Okay, so when it comes to council, so let's say council votes it forward, then it goes to as a taper uh on the ballot as a taper measure. And then if people voted no on it, then it would go away and we'd go back to the drawing board? Is that correct?
Yeah, pretty, well, you would still have the IGA and you still may have kind of basically a district that has no assets and has no money. And that kind of goes to how many times in the, you know, when we do the IGA, how many opportunities would you give the district um to go back to the voters? Because they could go back to the voters in twenty-three and make the same request. Um how many times do you do that before you say we're all done with the district conversation and we're going to look at something else for finance for the library?
Okay, so what I'm ultimately hearing you say and where I'm trying to get with this is that it ultimately is up to the residents of Boulder. Whether or not, so even if we move forward tonight with B, option two B, it's ultimately up to the residents of Boulder, whether or not they vote this in or not. It's not council doing this. Is, that's correct?
That's correct, and it it goes beyond Boulder a little bit. It's to all the voters within the district boundaries.
The Boulder County then.
Yeah, well, not all of Boulder County. The, you know, the proposed district, um you know, would include like uh ea- the eastern side would be kind of the Gunbarrel Niwot area, and then it would go up into the mountains. And then at some point, you hit the boundary for the Netherland Library District. So we would kind of be everything in between.
Right, that 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 general map that you guys had showed us back at one of the meetings.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, that's, that's where I'm going to get, is that it's up to the voters if we move forward with this direction. So thank you very much for clarifying for me.
Mary and then Bob. Mary?
Thanks, Sam. So I'm inclined um to move forward with the district path as well. Um and to support option B. For all of the reasons that Sam mentioned in the context of everything that's already going on. And I've been on council long enough to know that when you bombard the community with way too many things, there's just there's just so much bandwidth that people can put their attention towards. So so that's one thing. Um I think it would be advantageous in terms of getting a read on a broader slice of the potential um electorate getting a read on a broader slice of the potential um, electorate on how they feel about the district. Um, and, and doing that outreach and getting a better read on that prior to forming the district. So um, I also, one of the speakers spoke about Longmont forming a district. Perhaps there is some um, advantage to having a little more time to have some conversations there. And, you know, uh, uh, backing up just a little bit about the outreach, we also know that um, there were a lot of, I think, legitimate questions that were raised with respect to the previous survey. Um, very, very legitimate question, so um, I would like to see better outreach and get a better read on the electorate as well. So um, I think I had read, or maybe staff had mentioned, and, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that the um, commissioners didn't have the space on their work plan to do it as early as um, option A proposed. Is that something I'm making up, or did I hear something? Could somebody just help me out on that one?
I would uh, call upon Janet Michaels, if she's on the call, if you could turn your microphone on. Um, Janet has been our primary um, contact with uh, Boulder County staff.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you, Council Janet Michaels with the City Attorney's Office. I don't remember them saying that this is not on their work plan, that, that the county didn't have time to do that. I don't remember that being a part of the conversation that I had with county staff.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, in any case, I think that we would be better off to do some real due diligence um, in terms of formulating the IGA and, and primarily, you know, picking the committee for the IGA process. Giving ourselves enough time and thought to, to do that well and make sure that we have a really good group of people working on it. So that's another piece of it. So, for all those reasons, I would go with option B.
You're Mary, I got Bob and then Adam. Bob?
Uh, exactly, where Mary and Sam and, and uh, Mark are on this. I, I think that we do have a lot of community outreach and engagement to do, and on top of the laundry list of big things that Sam mentioned, uh, we also have one or two pretty big site reviews that are coming down the road, and we still have to wrap up community benefit, and we still have used tables to do. So we have a very busy five months remaining. I just don't see how we could jam uh, this decision in, or at least do it justice in between now and October. And I'm not, Sam said, I'm not sure what the magic of October is. Uh, if we're not gonna put this to the voters until November twenty twenty-two at the earliest. So I think we should do the type of engagement that Mary talked about. Um, and I would actually take it a step further. I, I would like to see, um, I, I, I'm not sure if I'd be hard to know how I'll feel in six or nine months when this comes back to us, but um, I, I'd like to see, you know, council at the, the moment of formation actually have a form of IGA that's presented. I, I wouldn't want to just appoint some people as trustees and then hope that we could reach agreement uh, and find out that we're two ships passing in the night, uh, under some sort of ninety-degree shot, a ninety-day shot clock. I would actually, I, at the mo- moment of formation, actually have council's preferred substance of an IGA on the table and say, hey, dear trustees, you're hereby appointed. This is the IGA we would accept. We can talk about the margins, but this is what we would want. And it may be some of the things that, that Mark talked about, and maybe some other things. But I would want the IGA to be kind of effectively pre-approved by council and the community. And then the trustees can look at it and say, yeah, we can live with this or no, we can't, rather than just leaving it to an open-ended negotiation. Um, but I, 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 I agree with, with uh, the pre- previous speakers. I think the uh, plan B on the, uh, on the alternative timeline that David laid out makes the most sense.
Thank you, Bob. Adam and then Junie, Adam?
Yeah, I also agree. I seem to best recall uh, in our meeting last February, that this is the approach we were sort of reaching consensus on, so I think it's good we follow through with that. Um, plus, uh, I do think we need the extra time, and to keep with council tradition, I think we just have to make sure the next two years of work plan already decided before the next council even gets voted in. So that just, you know, seems to happen each council, so why not keep it going?
Thank you, Adam. Junie?
Well, I think at this time, I already see where we are heading um, when it comes to B. I mean, I would have preferred A, but I see that the will of council is for B. Um, the only thing is, what if it's gonna be a new council? They might decide not to go any further, and it's gonna be a lot of time wasted. So I would have preferred just putting it to the ballot. Create a ballot measure for voter approval. And I think as well, when I think of community outreach, I think a ballot measure as well serve as a level of community outreach. It's either it's passed or it's not, because people choose not to vote it in. Um, so it is what it is that we will be moving with B. Um, but I hope that it works. I think the library districting is very important, and I think um, just hearing from community members. And I remember, you know, there was a time where I didn't have a job and I worked at the li- library as a volunteer. So libraries are really important. And I know we all agree that libraries are important, but I wish we're moving more, much faster, but I understand the constraint of times and some of the challenges that we may face, so.
Thank you, Junie. And if I could ask for a motion to extend the meeting past eleven?
No, moved.
Any objections besides Mark? Seeing none, Mirabai and then Rachel, Mirabai?
Um, so I'm along in the same lines as Junie is. I would have preferred to go with option um, A, but um, I think David has at least put my concerns to rest, and knowing that the voters ultimately will get to decide, that's really where I wanted to go with this. I didn't think it should be something that council um, made that decision on, because this is such a big uh, decision. I, I hope that we keep the asset of the library within our control, meaning renting it out. I would not ever support it in any other option um, with it being a district. But I, I think it's um, I just think it's something that it's so important to Boulder that to relinquish control is inconceivable to me. So um, I, I guess I can go with the will of council for option to B.
Rachel?
Just a question. Um, I think I'm, I'm maybe more optimistic on, on that things don't always have to be as slow as, as we plan them to be, and I appreciate um, like Mary's point that um, you know, y- you don't want to rush things, and I, I get that. But what if staff gets into this and they're like, oh no, this is much faster than we thought it was gonna be? Like, we can just move through this. Do, do they have to go slow? Or by saying option B, if it just goes faster, can it come back to us in October? I don't know who that's to, I'm just asking, like, is it possible that, that it just flows quickly and, and wow, here it is?
Well, I think, you know, I guess anything is possible. I'll just start with that. But um, you know, the way that we laid it out in the memo was, we laid it out as a series of um, work tasks that we would do. And really, it's a difference in how we engage the community. With option B, you know, the second option, option B, it's more, there's more engagement before you actually form the district. So I think that, you know, with that being the case, my hope would be that it will make everything kind of along the lines of what Councilmember Yates said. Um, after you form, after you take the, you know, you pass the resolution to form the district, that it will make everything after that go much faster. And hopefully with much more consensus.
Thank you, David, and David Farnin.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a c- clarifying question. I, because I, from your study session on February twenty-seventh, there seemed to be consensus from council that they wanted to begin the discussion about what the contents of the IGA would be. And I believe that came from you, Mayor Weaver, that you wanted to have knowledge in advance. And Bob uh, Yates, Councilor Yates kind of seconded that, and then just now mentioned additionally wanting to know. So is it your, is it your instruction to staff? Do you, I guess, does council inform that committee? And for staff to begin working on uh, a, a draft of an IGA, which would then be, you know, wrapped from the city. Because at the, you know, i- i- February twenty-seventh, the discussion was forming a committee of people who would responsibly represent the interest of city council, the interest of uh, the library, the interest of all these different groups. And I'm wondering if you're instructing us to begin that work in twenty twenty-one, or to wait for that work to twenty twenty-two? Because as David has pointed out multiple times, I think that crutches our timeline again, right? So if you go back to waiting entirely to twenty twenty-two, we're gonna be crunched with a timeline to get a ballot measure in place and an IGA if we haven't begun that discussion.
So, D- David, just in a colloquy to your question, I, I was just looking at option B as presented by staff. And option B is presented by staff has that uh, IGA process committee um, put together in December of twenty-one, presumably after the new council is seated. Um, I suppose there's a hybrid between A and B, because A has that IGA process committee put together in June. I suppose we could do something in between. But I was just going with the staff outline when I suggested option B, which would have that IGA committee seated December twenty-one. And then it would have seven months, as, as I read it, it would have seven months at least to get that IGA to the point, um, people would vote on it. So that's only if I'm reading the staff recommendation correctly. Do, does that make sense? Are you suggesting a hybrid between the two, or what was your question, David?
My, my question, yeah, I, I was wondering what it was you were wanting to do. And so I don't, I mean, to be clear, and David Gere can correct me on this, I don't believe there is a staff recommendation. We're putting in front of you to look for direction.
So I, maybe I missp- maybe I misspoke. I just meant the option that was described by staff, option B in the packet, yeah.
We worked, we tried to work out the work plan scenarios, which was their request in February twenty-seventh about how we could achieve these ends. Yeah, any hybrid would work as well. It's all depends upon what council wants us to do.
Great. Um, hang on, just one sec. Aaron and then Mary, Aaron?
Yeah, well, first, uh, David, I just, uh, I, I think I heard you say that option B involves more public engagement. Did, did I hear that right?
I think that that was, that's my understanding, yes.
Yeah, okay. So, because I'm just a little confused, because option A, it actually involves a longer timeframe. But anyway, I, 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 I hear that the, the will of council is to, to do the kind of option B timeframe and like, we can work with that. I, I appreciate essentially consensus on moving in the district direction. I think that's fantastic. I, I, I think it, it's worth considering a little bit of a hybrid, though. I, I, I've been hearing from majority of council, does it not, a desire not to pass a resolution, you know, um, this year. But if we could lay some of the groundwork for what an IGA might look like, um, you know, and not kind of start, do a standing start in December sometime, uh, right before the holidays, I think we might give ourselves a little bit more room for a, a, you know, a roomier timetable in twenty twenty-two. So hearing that there's no kind of a hundred percent web to exactly option A or option B, I, I just suggest that we uh, get a bit more of a start in twenty twenty-one. Uh, while it's fine to mostly follow the option B timetable, but.
And, and we can do that. I mean, this, it's a guideline. You know, I think that really, I think that the option B is more about when you do, when you do the resolution. What we do beforehand, we can start that earlier. And in fact, part of, part of the intent of just putting together sample IGAs and resolutions that are in the packet tonight was to start that co- you know, really to start that conversation.
And that was very helpful, having those written out. It, it helped me visualize them for sure.
Mary?
Yeah, thanks, Aaron. That's, that's a good segue into um, a proposal I wanted to make. And so my proposal is, is that we form the committee in the October timeframe. And that we take our time forming the committee, then we would have this council appointing that committee. And they could get going, you know, as soon as some, some date between December and let's see, when is that? Anyway, we formed the, the committee in, in October, and that gives us a little time to really be thoughtful about that formation. So that's my proposal, and then the rest of the, the schedule can fall into place with that.
Yeah, a- and Mary, I just want to colloquy and agree. I, I like the idea of seating the IGA committee, because it does demonstrate that this council, you know, we're not just saying it and then punting it to another council. Um, we're starting the process within this council, so I, I, I think that's a helpful suggestion, and it, it's like along the lines of what Aaron said as well. So um, I, I'd be happy with um, a hybrid of that sort. I think it's a good idea. And um, I, I don't know if there's anything magic about October, maybe September would work as well, just something, you know, after the break, after we get back, and once we've got our feet under us with all the things we have to do, maybe we can then, as council, say when we wanna um, recruit and seat that committee. But I agree. I think that would be good to do on this council, seat that committee.
I suggested um, October, because I was thinking September is when we're talking about budget. We start having the budget um, conversations. And there's gonna be some tough conversations around that, as well as all of the things that you mentioned. There's CU South, there's the the site reviews, there's the community benefit, there's um, the use tables, all of that stuff. And we can hopefully get the majority of that stuff out of the way, and then in October have some space. And then um, you know, maybe staff spends a little bit of time um, putting out the, the, the announcements for applications to the committee. I'm not sure what that process looks like.
Mark?
Yeah, for, for all the people who participated tonight, I hope uh, you will see that the takeaway tonight is, is not that we did not pass a resolution this evening. But as I look at it, all nine members of council have indicated a willingness to go down the path of creating a library district and putting that in front of the voters of Boulder. And so to, you know, I, I, I hope uh, people who are participating tonight and listening will not think that this is somehow punting it uh, down the road. Um, it's simply a reflection of the workload that staff has and that we have between now um, and the next council, and we're fairly heavily burdened as is. Um, but every member of this council has expressed a willingness to move down that path, and I think that should be the primary takeaway um, from this evening's conversation.
You're good, thank you. So I would invite a motion, maybe Mary or Aaron would like to make it, that um, synthesizes the discussion we've just had, and maybe we can move ahead. Um, I will just point out, Mark, to your point and to an earlier question I asked, there was no idea that tonight we would pass a resolution that would form a district. That was not in front of us. It wasn't a staff recommendation. It was just that we pick a pathway if we want to go in that direction and give staff direction about a schedule. So just for what it's worth, I don't think we were ever likely to pass a district formation resolution tonight just to launch a work plan. I just want to make that clear to people listening as well.
But just a colloquy on that, it, it's that we were getting a number of comments that were basically suggesting to us that we, we act now, act immediately. And yes, I understand that was not in contemplation for us. But it, to the extent that, that people have made those comments and feel disappointed that we did not act, I think there's good reason for that, in addition to it not being part of the uh, uh, the scope of what we were going to do this evening.
Great. Bob?
Yeah, as long as we're clarifying, um, you know, why we're doing what we're doing. While all the speakers tonight, um, were, I think all the speakers tonight were advocating for a library, formation of a library district. Community should also know that we received um, a few dozen emails from people in the community who were opposed. So I would say that the emails were probably two to one or three to one in favor. So there was certainly a a more people that contacted us either in writing or this evening who were in favor. It wasn't, it wasn't an absence of opposition. It was a significant number of people. I think those are the people that we want to hear from in addition to the proponents under the community engagement that Mary was talking about. I think we want to open it up and listen to everybody in the community and not limited to those people having to speak at a public hearing on a particular night.
Thank you, Bob. We've got Mary, Rachel and Aaron. Mary?
I'm going to put a motion on the table. So I move that we direct staff to begin work to create a ballot measure for voter approval for a new dedicated municipal property tax to fund library services using option B as the main path forward with the formation of the committee in the October timeframe.
Thank you. May I ask a clarifying question?
Please.
You said a dedicated municipal tax.
I was reading the motion language. Did I say, I said a dedicated municipal property tax.
It should be on the motion page, on page, page two of the memo. If you're looking for the district one, it is.
Ah, it's the first one.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. I was, I was thinking back on the slide, but all right. So erase what I just said. Strike that from the record or whatever. So I move that we direct staff to begin the work to form a library district by city council resolution using option B as the main work plan schedule with the formation of, with the exception of a formation for the process committee in October of twenty twenty one.
Good. Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, a motion and a second. If it's okay, Rachel and Aaron, I'll let Mary speak to her motion and then go to you. Mary, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I, I think that this is the right way to go. I, I do think that we need to conduct more outreach that is a little bit more widespread. I think a lot of the outreach has mainly focused within the city of Boulder. So we need to reach out to the broader community that the district would consist of. So that's an important piece. I think also that to go with the shorter timeframe would put a lot of pressure, not just on staff, especially finance staff, but on council as well. Our schedules are, our meetings are pretty packed already with a lot of stuff that we need to get done in this council. And so I see forming the process committee as a kind of hybrid way forward.
Very good. And if it's okay, I'll go to Rachel and then Aaron, and then I'll come back to you, Mark, to speak to your second. Rachel?
Um, well, so I didn't realize I'd be like going after the motion and was more responding to Mark Wallach's last statement about, you know, community members and people who maybe didn't understand what we were doing tonight and that we weren't really teed up to form a district by resolution. I also said that. And so I want to make it clear that I wasn't misinformed or under informed or saying that accidentally. You know, I requested in February that we receive a staff recommendation on this, on whether staff wanted us to form a district by resolution. And we didn't get a recommendation. I don't know if staff couldn't do that or what that was about. But given that we didn't have a specific recommendation, it was entirely within the scope of possibility for tonight to have that vote. So I just wanted to make that clear. And we did have a public hearing and it would have been a very fair thing to vote on tonight. And also just to clarify, I have not received dozens of emails opposing this. I saw a handful, I feel like, in the last day or two, but not dozens. So just wanted to clarify those points and I will support. I'm glad that we're moving forward with this and hopefully not creating too much delay. So we'll be supporting Mary's motion.
Aaron?
Yeah. Oh, I just wanted to address the email question. I did a real quick search on district in my council mailbox. But I think maybe there was maybe twelve or fifteen in opposition. I did a quick count of maybe eighty in supports. I think it was a little more a little more skewed than maybe, but we could get, we could do a, an official count, maybe, but definitely had some opposition, but I think it was definitely more skewed in support. And then I am happy to support the motion. I'm really glad we're moving forward with the library district and I look forward to the formation of that committee in October.
Thank you, Aaron. Mark, do you want to speak to your second? And then I'll go to Bob.
Yeah, very, very briefly. I obviously support Mary's motion. I I think it's appropriate for staff, given their constrained resources at this time. But I also think it's important to actually get the show on the road. And I think that's what we're doing tonight. And I'm very supportive of doing that. So I am happy to vote in favor.
Thank you, Mark. Bob?
I just wanted to observe that some of us receive direct emails from constituents that come to individual council members that don't go to the council general mailbox. Okay.
Thanks. I thought you were just talking about the general council emails. Thanks for the clarification, Bob.
No.
Mary?
Yeah, I just wanted to also add that one of the, two of the emails that I did see come through were emails that were asking people to email council in favor of the library district. I did not see any emails that were going out to people to vote, not in favor of or to speak, not in favor of the library district. So that gives me a little bit of pause that there has been encouragement for one path forward and doesn't seem to be encouragement for the other one. Not to say that there is or there isn't, but I think that is cause enough to want to do our due diligence with respect to outreach.
Very good. And before I call for a vote, I'm just going to make one small comment. I'm glad that we're moving forward with this. We may as well get the I G A worked out because those details are important and take it to council and then to the voters. I will point out that one of the challenges that this is going to face in twenty twenty two will be a likely county ballot measure. And now one or more of these could come this year. But I do know that the county has got at least three ballot measures that are being discussed, one around mental health funding, one around affordable housing and one around transportation. So another thing that I'd encourage everyone who is hopeful about a library district to do is to think about what that's going to look like and how whatever level of mill levy is ultimately kind of tested with voters for acceptability and run. Probably should contemplate whatever the county is thinking about doing in twenty twenty two. So that's just kind of a contextual comment that there's a few things to do here. Get the I G A right, figure out what the city is going to do as far as assets and employees and the transfer. And I do believe that there's good models for all of that. But then the next part of this is getting the voters to weigh in on taxing themselves. And it's not free money. It will create room in the city budget if we have a district funding the library for sure. But it is a tax burden. And so, you know, it is just worth thinking through what the other asks are going to be of taxpayers, both in Boulder and in the district. With that, if there are no more comments, I will call for a vote on Mary's motion. Anyone want to weigh in? Okay, all in favor of the motion on the table, raise your hand. Mine's up. One, two, three. It is unanimous. All right. Well, congratulations. Thank you, staff. Thank you. Both David Farnin and David Gear and the rest of staff who supported this. It is good to see this moving forward. And I see David would like to say something.
First of all, I just wanted to recognize our staff team. It took a great deal of coordination to bring this forward to you this evening. And I would also just like to thank the council for the direction because I truly do believe that the tweaks and modifications that you made to the work plan that we put together has made it a much better product. So thank you.
Thank you, David. Any other comments from council before we close this item? Okay, with that, this item is done. Alicia, I believe we're at the end. Is there anything else we have?
Alicia, you're muted.
Yeah, you keep muting. Okay.
Okay, sorry about that.
No problem.
All right. No, sir. I think that was our last item.
Okay, very good. So debrief and comment. Adam?
Yeah, just wanted to flag something. We got an email update from the beginning of the meeting about the gun barrel I G A. And the commenter was actually correct that it was expiring at fifteen years, not twenty. Jacob Lindsay pointed that out. So that's a discussion we'll have to have in the future, too.
Very good. And I
Just wanted to put that out there publicly.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Adam. That's a good reminder. Yep, Jacob did by email let us know that he was mistaken and that staff will be coming back to us with information on that. So thank you, Adam, for that. Aaron?
Thanks. I was just going to add that staff is working on it now, now that it's on their radar. So thanks.
And thanks to the public who commented tonight, both at open comment and the public hearing. Your passion is noted and we appreciate your input for sure. With that, I'll gavel this meeting closed at eleven twenty six. Thank you all so much for your time. Everyone, have a good evening.
Night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.